And I thank everybody for coming. We might want to go ahead and do some introductions. Because since we're close neighbors and everything. So I live at 403 Northwest River Road. And I'm not as impacted as some of the others are here. We applied for this grant actually probably going like three years ago. Or at least two years ago, 2020. So it's been quite a while coming. And now we're at the phase where it's land acquisition time. So Adrian Flores is our assistant city manager. And Mr. Freeland is here representing the Freeland Inter, the city engineers. And that's me wanting to introduce.
My name is Matthew McGovern. I live at 213 Northwest River Road, so I'm impacted and I'm on City Council.
Okay. Jessica.
Yes, I'm Jessica Daydon. I work at Mr. Freeman. Mary's the grant firm that Martinville hired along with Freeland Inter to help with the paperwork.
And Cindy.
Cindy Woolley. I'm a descendant of John Gray, right down here in this.
That's my cousin. And Ruben Brooks was in earlier too. He's also a descendant. And Dorothy. Do we have any other council members here? Mike said he was coming back. Sam Clanton's here. Dan's here. He's here. All right. I'm going to speak for workshops.
Oh, wait.
No, 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 no.
Everyone wants to.
No, no, no.
Patricia. I'm Patricia.
Let me cow over.
I'm Patricia. And I'm very impacted. And I am also here advocating for our neighbors, Tom and Bonnie McCarroll, who will be losing the most trees and are 100% absolutely no way okay. So we are very impacted. They will be losing the most mature trees of all of their property. And they live in Hawaii. But we have been in contact. And so I would be here advocating for them and for our property as well.
Okay. And.
Sam Roberts. Sam Harper Roberts. Born and raised here. Old school. And I just took Lauren Harris's place as the taking care of Martinville Cemetery.
Okay. Sam Clanton.
Hi, I'm Sam Clanton. I'm on the city council. I'm a resident of Martinville. I live on this side of Lockhart Street. I live on Martinville Street and Wesley Martinville's house. So I'm here to listen.
And in the back row. My name is Melissa Vicar. I'm with Ray with this one. And Lauren is with this one.
Cody.
Cody G. lives within the shoe tree house.
And he rents from Melanie White. So he's here representing her. And then Patricia Matthews. And then my husband. And then you said. Cindy said your names real quick.
Carrie and Becky McMullen. Carrie and Cindy are cousins.
Okay. And did you use the living watch?
No. We saw you when we had that historical marker thing.
Oh, okay. Okay. Was there a Mel my name?
Yes.
And so. It was mentioned by Rubens that she might have ownership? Because Leifert is going to be doing a title search to look for ownership.
No, she doesn't. She's done a lot, a lot of research over the years. She had a couple of PTs.
But no ownership in this. We've been introducing ourselves. Meredith. Is brand new to the community? So do you want to introduce yourself?
Okay. I'm Meredith Evans. And this is my husband Matt. And we just bought the house down the 105. 105. I'm sitting in some care.
Okay. And then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Freeland. And he can explain the project. And then we'll let anybody speak.
Sure. I have a couple of tractors here that kind of wants to get all the background information out of the way. We can come up here and look at and talk about individual properties and work and what's happening. As Mayor said, this project started in about 2020, kind of in the due diligence phase, working through the grant process. The GLO has given the city a pretty significant amount of money to do decent improvements. This project primarily has started as a drainage improvement project. And the impact of that drainage improvement has brought about the need to also make it a street project and utility project. The project, we went through kind of the preliminary planning phase, the due diligence phase. I believe February or March of '22, there was another kind of a public workshop where we had presented several different options to the community and city council. And through those lists of options, we were kind of given a direction to move with the certain design criteria. And so we started in that process. In that design, it does have a need to acquire some right of way along Northwest River Road between here and first S curve, what I call the S curve where the shoe tree is. And then the project will extend beyond the second curve, a little bit past that. Originally, the project was going to be from Lockhart Street all the way out to 12 Run. Kobe, it happened in 2019 and 2020 and 2021. If anybody bought anything or was involved in the economy at all, prices went through the roof. The project shortened out to where we're only extending the road work. Couple hundred feet past the second S curve. Now we had to do some cost saving measures. And so the project itself, as I mentioned, is primarily a drainage project. As we know, all of Northwest River Road and all of the homes in and around that area are all within the 100-year flood. So in the event the 100-year flood plan comes again, this doesn't solve that problem. But it improves the conditions from today's no rain and to about a 10 or 15 year. The project, the watershed contributing to Martinville extends beyond 80 on the other side of the highway. And it's a pretty huge watershed that comes and flows and brings water in down kind of a. There's a low spot right here back behind this first part of this S curve, that one little subdivision. But it's known as this river Plains Drive. So kind of back behind that, there's a culvert on 80 and all that water kind of comes through there. So this project, what we're planning to do is do some channel improvements in the, I believe it's the Walton property, the big open field right behind the Plains Drive subdivision. Do an open channel, intercept and capture that water. And then route that water into two 7x4 box culverts down Northwest River Road until we hit the low point right here where the cemetery is, where all the water comes across the road now and washes down into that channel. We're going to have those box culverts discharged down there at the bottom of that ravine. And so what that's going to do is intercept and bypass a lot of the water that's coming into the road area now, get it into those culverts, extend it down and discharge it at that outfall location. Also with that, we're going to extend a storm down to the second curve.
Storm.
It was full of water. I think maybe there's still a little bit there. We had a little, thankfully, we had a little bit of a rain event last week. And I was out here, I think on Friday, and that whole corner was just full. I didn't bring my swim trunks, so but if you live there and drive there, you see the water there. So we're extending a storm culvert down there and three curb inlets on that low side of that curve to be able to capture that water and get it out of the way too. So this culvert system, as I kind of explained, is two 7x4 box culverts. And when you think about that, well, that's not very big. But these box culverts are concrete structures. They have eight, nine inch sidewalls both sides. When you put them inside by side, you have to have some space in between them to be able to get the compaction to grow and get this system in. So these two 75x4 box culverts will have a footprint that is ultimately about 20 foot wide. And that channel or the ditch to put these culverts in will probably be eight to 10 foot deep on average, right down the middle of River Road. And so when I said this started out as a drainage project and turned into a street project, that's why. It's because we're going to have to completely eliminate and move all of the infrastructure that you have out there now. Put these box culverts in and then come back and put infrastructure back in. So in doing this, we're relocating the water line. We're adding a parallel sanitary sewer line. Currently, there's a sanitary sewer line that runs down Northwest River Road. The houses on both sides of the street go to that line. But when we put this sanitary sewer, or when we put this storm drain box culvert down the middle, we lose the opportunity for these houses on the riverside to gravity drain back to the sanitary sewer lines on the north side of the road. So we're installing a separate and parallel sanitary sewer main on the south side of the road. So there's sanitary sewer mains and that's to serve all the houses on the river. And then there's also two existing water lines on the south side of the road that we're relocating on that same side of the road. On the north side of the road, we still have all of the localized drains that we have to deal with. And that's kind of the yards in these properties on the north side of the roads that don't get intercepted into this channel before we're again. And there are also several main underground communication lines on the north side of the road. And so evaluating this and laying this out in order to maintain the drainage on the north side of the road, maintain the sanitary sewer service to those properties on the north, not impact that underground fiber cable, and to put it in the storm sewer line and then continue to serve this south side of the property or south side of Northwest River Road, kind of necessitated the relocation of all of these underground facilities. And that is what necessitated the right of way tanks along Northwest River Road. If you're in these impacted properties, that's probably why you're here. So that right of way take started down at the shoe tree. We're having to take out a corner. And here's an exhibit of the improvements that we can look at. Here's an exhibit of the right of way takes. But we had to take some additional property on the shoe tree corner. Right now, the roadway, the S curves through that area, they're not safe curves. They're very, very sharp. And so in order for us to design these to current standards based on the speed limit, we had to make those curves less severe. And so that required a little bit of extra right of way take on the first corner. The second corner, there was room to get around there. Also, the current road is 18 foot at best, you know, plus or minus depending on part of the road it is. The new road's going to be 20 foot wide curved or a header curve road. It won't be stand up because we still have to allow water to move in and around. And so yeah, the right of way takes started at about 20 foot wide down that corner. And then about halfway through, it started to taper down from 20 foot down to 10 and zero right near the cemetery properties. And then in the cemetery, we had to, we're looking to acquire some drainage easements in order to get that discharge structure for that culvert system out. That's a general high level overview. I've got the plans where we are today. I've got some exhibits on the right of way takes. I have some tree exhibits. I know that's a concern for everybody. Willing to answer any questions I can, help you understand anything more about the project that you would like to know.
Can you put that on the screen? That those plans?
I don't have these electronically. I've got them, I've got them here and I have a quick thing to look at and pass them around.
Want me to move first? Can I say this bit?
No, I will first. That's my white pockets. So first question, right of way versus easement? Why are we doing a right of way instead of an easement?
So in situations where we're doing a structure improvements like that, it's very normal to do the right of way take. A couple of differences with right of way. In a situation where there's right of way, the city acquires that property, be simple. And it's removed from the tax roll of the property. And easement can be done as well. The use of the property doesn't necessarily change. And the tax burden for that property still remains with the top.
Does everyone understand the difference between a right of way and an easement?
You can explain it.
Okay. So the right of way is very similar to what's going on over here when you have a road. It's basically become part of the road and it comes away from your property. So obviously, Cody, you're going to lose, you're going to lose the whole corner. You know what I mean? Obviously, you're the most impacted in that particular property. And the city owns it forever. The upkeep and maintenance obviously is an issue because it's in front of your house. So now you're still, are you still responsible for it technically, as the mayor will tell you? In some cases, the city has done, has done the responsibility of maintaining the property. The front, across the street from me, the homeowner there is a vacant lot. It gets maintained on occasion by the city just because it needs to be maintained. Okay? Same thing applies across the street from you where the Harrisons are. And in easement, we would still own the property. We still have use of the property. We, you know, have access to it. But we obviously own it. We're paying property taxes on it. But in case, we also can do what we want with the property, if you will. So if it is a right of way, as an example, technically, you cannot put a sprinkler system in that, which I have a sprinkler system in the front of my yard, that has become a problem. Okay? So I'm obviously not for the phrase right of way personally myself. As I was originally, as I understood it from Mr. Turk, that it was not going to be a right of way. It was going to be. The second thing is, and I want to ask you, the original plan that was done when I first moved here, and this is the reason I came to city council meetings, was this project. This is the reason I came. I came for almost two years to every meeting but two. And now I'm on city council because of this project. Okay? Because I found out about it and no one told me, kind of like, surprise, you know, this is what's going to happen. The original project, the width of the easement from you, from your current home that you're living in to my side was 66 feet. That was what they're going to go to. Now it breaks 75, almost 80 feet. So the change about a year ago went from a narrow one-way situation and they added 10 more feet to this project in width. And they also added the S curve. Which basically takes the whole, yes, the, yeah. I have printed plans that were presented in the January of last year, of this past year's meeting. I was here. I really didn't get an opportunity to fight against it. I wasn't on council. It was just like, well, here, here's the bill, start swallowing. And I just talked to you about that. And that's why I was like up in arms about it at that time. Number one, I don't want, I don't want a right of way. I want my land. Number one, you're taking 4,900 square feet of my property. That basically means I'm going to lose 1,000 square feet of impervious cover going forward. I basically cannot put any more structure on my house. It's now blocked. So I won't. You're impacting me personally. So that's another, that's a whole nother issue that you're having. You can do the same thing with Cody. Now, you're going to lose.
I won't be able to go on that block.
No.
That third block won't be able to take.
If you subdivide, yeah.
Your old tree, my old trees, I'm harvest by trade as well.
So yeah, I know. Yeah. So there's, there's, you know, so I'm not, I'm obviously, if you're, if the land is in the road, if we're, if they're taking the road, that's a right of way. The road is there is one thing. Obviously, they're going to take more because they need, they need room to do it. But the original plan that was done was this was going to be a one-way all the way through because it was going to quail. Now it is a two-way road coming. And that's why they're taking another 10 feet.
When you're talking about the one-way, it's just while they're doing construction on it?
Yes. So when they're doing construction on it, it was on the page before, I talked to Turk at Great Lakes. And they, I have pictures of it, I'm not, I'm sure you do as well, of how they're, why they need an extra 10 feet. Is because they're putting a temporary road, a U-turn, if you will, at Plains. Okay? So there'll be traffic going to Plains and then coming back. So why is it critical to make it two-way doing construction? I don't understand. Why are we going from one-way to two-way on a temporary basis?
I mean, I just want to say like, how many people are actually needing access to this little strip of the road during construction? It's not very many people. We do not need a wide road. We do not need a wide road. I am happy to drive around those trees to save the trees.
Remake it one-way.
Like, there's no reason. This isn't a throughway. Anybody who doesn't live between the shoe tree and the cemetery does not need to be driving on this road for any reason. Maybe emergency vehicle might get in there. Maybe like my mom's coming, she needs to get through, but that's it. So I really do not understand why do we need to have such, so much stuff taken out to have this temporary road? And then we're going to take out 50, 70, 100-year-old trees for a temporary road? Like, I don't get it.
I, I had, you know.
Could you speak to that concern?
Sure. So the traffic, the traffic phase and plan for construction, your eyes is very challenging in this area because it is, it's a narrow right of way. There are temporary roads. I think the traffic control plan is six or seven phases for the construction through here. And it's, you know, taking down one side of the road or the other. As I mentioned before, this box culvert system that's going in will have about a 20-foot wide footprint, about 18 foot deep. And in order so to be able to put that in, entrench that and provide property access, we did have to put in temporary roads on both sides.
One, one, one can just be one-way. I don't do that.
It is. And part of the traffic control plan, some of these, some of these will be one-way.
You want to get the whole thing? No, you, no, 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 no. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to go argue straight up on you on that one. But that is not what was presented. I just had Turk come to my house. And he went and I tried to explain to him why you're taking out my 80, 90-year-old red old. And there's obviously next to, in between us, there's two of them. They're right on the easement. They're, so that's where the water line is going. And he is having it turn around. This is a neighborhood street. This is not a throughway. This is a neighborhood, sorry.
Okay. All right. I mean, Dorothy's driven. Must have been a strange place.
This is the third phase of it. You're correct. And that's, that's access on both sides of the roadway.
Well, what we're implying is what we would suggest, and which is what I talked to him about and I talked about in January when I was the only one speaking on behalf of it, was that there was no need to add another road to take another 10 feet of anyone's property for the sole purpose of traffic control. There is no traffic on that road. The only traffic is 12 homes.
No, unless.
It's 12 homes, including Plains.
We can go through that field.
I mean.
You can make a temporary.
There's, there's a lot of solutions. I, I will, yeah, I know, she's going to talk whether I like it or not. Okay. I've been waiting.
My name is Dorothy McGovern. I live at 213 Northwest River Road. Everything I say has nothing to do with my husband, may believe or whatever. All the things he has said so far, his bits of jokes, so please don't think that he's being rude. He knows what I'm going to say, how I feel. We both feel the same way. When we first started coming to meetings regarding, obviously, this issue, and Turk made his presentation and he told us what the, what the plans were. And he had a poster up there. We had a, and I'm sorry, apologize when the day it's gone, he does. Then we had a citywide gathering so that we could talk about what things we could do, what things the people want, how, you know, we have this money, how can we work together, how can we go and say. The next time he came back, and I do believe this was in January of this year, Turk presented us, and again, it was on their three separate, I'm going to remember. Three separate options that we could, as the community and a council, look at and see which one we liked better. Do we think what was important to us, what was not important to us? A lot of people, you know, did get to speak. I did not get to speak. So I am speaking now. So at that meeting was when I found out and understood, that's probably more important, is that I understood what the engineers were planning on doing and making a two-way road, which before it had been one-way. Everybody will have to go this way. And then when we went to the other part of the road, then everybody will go this way. Seems like reasonable. That's when we found out that, no, it's going to be, it's going to be two-way. And as of today, I have seen no paperwork from the city council, from the engineer, from GLO, and whoever the hell is involved in this. Okay? Nobody has said anything to me about my property. Apparently Turk got permission to come onto my property and stake some things out. Okay? Maybe my husband did that. I didn't.
Only you can sign that.
Okay. So Melanie asked me for permission to come on my property and put stakes. So when I walk out and I see stakes on the cost of front of my yard, I'm like, what's going on? What is this? So I had to reach out to Turk and ask him, can you please come and explain this whole thing to him? He would be glad to. He came out with his measurement. My husband had his measuring thing that he has. And it was more disgusting than I thought. And my husband will talk to you more about that. When, so when we were at that meeting in January, and I do believe there was a vote that the city council members voted on something.
An option we all agreed upon.
Okay. Did the option we agreed upon. Before that vote, city council members, city council, excuse me, said, we're not talking about this anymore. We're taking a vote. And I was not done talking. And so here I am. And I'm still pissed off about it, can you tell?
Could I ask one question?
Yes, sir.
Do you know more about this than most of you? If we went with the original plan with a one-way road, would the trees be taken out? The big tree? The original plan? The original plan was 10 feet. I've been trying to send this email to Adrian to show what the differences were between the original easement that was presented when we first moved here and then the modification which was done. And I don't blame anyone at council other than the fact that no one understood that the width of the easement that they were proposing changed dramatically, which is why I reached out to Turk. Because when I saw this two-lane thing, I kept going, well, how wide is this thing going to be? And I'm like, I'm sorry, there's not a single measurement on any of the 68 pages that I, excuse me, 69 pages that I printed out from that proposal from January of this year. So there is no measurements. There's just a PDF with nice colored step-by-step, it's very good on the bottom, you know? But we didn't know.
Okay. So then he came out. And that's when we found out that not only is he taking more than he said, and I did not realize because I'm an engineer, that there was approximately this much space that was going to be needed to run. Guys, help me.
Waterline.
Waterlines and things like, yeah, sewer lines. Okay? Wasn't going to be destructive. Right here, I have an 80-year-old tree.
The trunk of the tree, as he, he painted our ground, right where the line was going to be. And you're obviously very, more knowledgeable than I am with trees. He is within four and a half, five feet from the base of the trunk of the tree is going to be the water line. And so I had Markless tree come out. We did a, we did an estimate of the value of the tree. We did an estimate of destruction of the tree. We did an estimate on the health, safety, if you will, that we have to do to save the tree. Because as you know, on our tree, 65, 70% of the foliage is on the house side because all the water is on the other side, so it's counterbalanced. So all the roots are on the side, which is now going to be. So all the roots are on the side, which is now gonna be impacted because they're gonna put a road over it, and then they're gonna just run a water line and put stress on it. Bartlett Tree basically told me they're gonna spend, have to spend between ten and twelve thousand dollars just to cut the tree back and do a water mitigation and soil preparations, then just to potentially save the tree. I told Turk, if the tree dies, I sue you.
So a quick question for you. I want to just clarify. If the original plan he came up with one-way, would that impact your tree or the sewer?
Very little.
Yeah, it would still impact a lot of other trees.
What I'm saying.
We're not done. We're just, we're just talking about my government property right now.
Yeah, I'm just talking, I mean, what's.
Yeah, Patricia, but let me say his point, his point. My point is.
Ten feet is ten feet.
I mean, if we're going, I don't, I still don't understand. I haven't been explained, why do we have to have two-way on a, on a temporary construction? If that will eliminate the, the width of the roadway or the easement, and you can save trees, that's a no-brainer.
Nonetheless, they're gonna be on, all over the critical region.
I'm gonna finish up real quick.
Alright, alright, we're gonna do that.
That needs to be clarified.
Okay, so Turk walked, Turk walked me through it. I'm standing here where this line is gonna be, and I look to the right, and I look to the left, and of course, it's not on a directional thing, and I start counting how many trees. And basically, when you go down Northwest River Road, you make a visual, get a visual, if you're driving down, driving toward the shoe tree, there will be no trees on this side of the road. Okay? There will be no trees until, maybe there's one or two.
Yeah, the two burrows that we just planted?
There's nothing.
They, no, they're, they're destroyed.
Patricia has the, uh, the, more, the numbers exactly. Um, but if you visualize.
The riverside.
Yes.
On the, I'm sorry, on the riverside.
You're going this way, and it's this line here. This is the road. These are the houses. The river is behind. All of these houses from the shoe tree at Tony's property, which he has.
I have four.
I mean, it's a whole row which.
It's a whole.
It's all in the morning sun.
Row. The whole row. It's sickening. It is sickening.
American, oh.
Okay.
So what, the question, why is Mr. Turk not here?
He has a free discussion.
Well, that's, 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 let me finish one thing. Let me finish one thing. That's unacceptable because he's the one that made this original deal. He needs to be here to defend himself and explain his, what he was saying before with one-way in and out. He's changing the plan, so why is he not here?
I'm gonna finish up my statement, and then I'll let everybody else talk. In respect.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I apologize. I'm, I'm very, uh, upset about this. The last thing that, that gets me or did anything, what I'm doing or anything else, that really bothers me is that we're having this meeting right now. I do not, I believe that letters were sent out to people. You guys, we all get it that the letter, everything is in very state. Okay, is it, I don't know if they got in the letter. I don't know if anybody received any information, hey, this is what's gonna happen. It concerns me about our property, um, our neighbors who are property owners who live out of state. Do they know what's going on?
Yes.
Okay, and here is the thing. Here's the fact. And I'm gonna make, make you an example, and I do not mean this to be disrespectful. I do not mean this to be respectful. But when the city council voted at the last meeting in January to change that around, I will expect that there were fifty percent or more council members that had no freaking idea what they were voting on. Does that mean that they were ignorant?
Well, he changed the plans.
He changed the plans, but he brought them back for us to vote.
My point.
Now, and when Turk was talking, you know, we were, we were having such a good time at this meeting. We're talking about speed hunts. How are we gonna slow people down? It was great. They're like, oh man, this, we're gonna have to stay. We're gonna do this and that. And nobody talked about the big picture and what this is going to look like.
We're going.
Okay. Thank you for letting me list some of the things. Um, I know there's more people here that are much more qualified and have more information. Thank you though.
Thank you, Jerry.
And the cemetery.
The store.
An historical cemetery. I'm worried about that too. Okay, so I have the, I mean, maybe this is just like the most obvious thing in the world, but if this project is to benefit the citizens of Markendale and the people who would benefit from this don't want it, why is the city of Markendale doing it?
We got it cranked.
Okay, that's not a good reason. So I just, I don't understand. It's like, this is our town, this is our home.
We did want it because we have a lot of flooding, and, uh, this would help to mitigate flooding.
He just said it would. I just couldn't say it wouldn't.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jared Avell. Sorry for walking in late. I've been participating online as I was, I drove in. I'm the city manager. So the, lot of the minor flooding, it's not gonna be a hundred-year, it's not so high a hundred-year flood, but the, I think the ten-year event is kind of what we're talking about. The ten-year event primarily impacts those, I think it's on Plains Drive, that, that cul-de-sac, the waters that are coming in off the field in their backyards and through. At that point, the road kind of serves as the conveyance for the water. And so in some ways, the people who are benefiting most from this project probably aren't ones who are losing land because of the project. Um, just the way that the, the layouts have worked out and the, where the different easements is and, um, fiber and all that. So it is helping the community. It's helping, it's helping not only those who might live on Northwest Road and might be subject to these proposed land acquisition, but it's also serving to keep that roadway open during a rainstorm. I mean, a, a small rainstorm right now puts three inches of water on that road.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't, it doesn't bother me at all.
It, it doesn't serve the community as a whole well when they lose the access to a road. Other than Highway eighty, that's the only road that goes.
So we are the community. And we are the ones who need to access that road. It is us. We are the ones who access that road. And if we're telling you that is not an inconvenience to us, we would rather have our trees, then isn't that what matters?
It definitely matters.
Our home and our community. So we don't, I don't care.
And I'm upset about that. And you still have an answer, but question. My question is, if we went to the original plan in one-way, would that eliminate some of the issues, Mr. McGovern, with these trees and roadway and all that?
It would eliminate, the, like, the difference is ten feet.
Ten feet can make a difference.
They're taking ten more feet than the original plan.
And that affects the, that affects the water line?
The original was sixty-six feet. You saw me measuring this afternoon again, was sixty-six feet from your, and your cover, where your driveway has a little hump there, going across, the original was sixty-six feet. Because I asked Turk that at the very first meeting, like, almost two years ago. Because he did give us a measurement. This, this, I got this today. I never got it. It was mailed to an old agress that's two years old. Okay? This is the first one that's actually shown how much land they're taking. None of these proposals were in here. I don't think anyone in council, council understood how much land was being taken. When I looked at this, I asked Turk during that meeting, I go, wait a minute. You're getting awfully close to my red oak. I got a real easy landmark there. You know, it's a real easy landmark, right? I just spent five thousand dollars saving it over the last two and, two and a half years as the freeze. Y'all remember after the freeze, it turned brown, almost died. I had to pay twenty-five-hundred dollars to Bartlett for them to fertilize and save it. And I spend a thou, a thousand dollars a year to fertilize and save that tree and the live oak in the front. So I have a vested interest in my trees. I also planted two burrows in the front, which did not even make the map.
So real quick, Gary, this might be a good opportunity to explain this. When those proposals were given to council and into the city, those are at different stages of the design process. And so not the full design is known until the full design is known. It's kind of a choose-your-own-adventure model. You know, we can come up with fifty percent plant, ninety percent plant, a hundred percent plant. And maybe through that drafting process, things naturally will change. So I don't know, Gary, if you wanna go with it.
Well, my question again, my question again, why is it critical to have a two-way on the construction zone? Why? I mean, that's, I haven't got an answer yet. And that's, that's the, if, if we could, if, if they can save ten feet, that could make a big difference. So if Turk explains, explains, Jerry.
Absolutely. So two-way access, uh, no, you're absolutely right. We can provide one-way access. Uh, but understand, this storm service system that's going down the middle of the road that requires us to have temporary access on both sides, that ditch is gonna be about twenty-foot-wide and ten-foot-deep. If we have one-way access on one side of this cover system, then all of the residences on the other side of the street won't be able to drive into their property. They would, I don't know, park at the church.
Now, wait, and I've seen enough construction zones you can do. You could do temporary.
Proceeds or something.
Over, over a twenty-foot-wide, ten-foot ditch, that's a bridge.
Well, you can do, there's other ways you can, you don't have, you can.
You're absolutely right.
You can, you can get ways around that. And that, that's what needs to be discussed. If that, problem is, if we do one-way, you're gonna save about ten feet. Is that correct?
So the permanent placement of the utilities are still gonna require this amount of roadway. So, no, you're right. The temporary roads are in, in those, our edges when that cover's going down the middle of the roadway. Uh, once it's in, then the roads will go back to it. But the permanent assignment of the water and sanitary sewer wastewater line on the south side of the road still require that space. The existing utilities on the north side of the road still require the space that they currently sit in. And so we could do one-way, um, and work out other ways to get these, the, the property owners to their homes that are on the opposite side of that ditch. You're right. I mean, temporary bridges, whatever. I mean, it's all a, a phasing and installation process. But at the end of the day, the permanent utilities still occupy the same space.
So what is the width of the wastewater easement on the north side, on the south side? What is the requirement?
So all of these utilities are, are in allocated spaces. A, a, about a foot.
You didn't answer my question.
Okay, so, so a wastewater line and a roadway is not within an easement. And easement requirements for utilities are dependent upon the purveyor that the utility sits in. Uh, I would say a typical wastewater line usually requires a ten-to-fifteen-foot-wide easement for maintenance, construction, access, all of that stuff. I can tell you, to help answer that question, like I said, we're having to install a second sanitary sewer line on the south side of the road because we can't get the gravity flow across or through this cover system.
Where does that have to cross in the road?
It down, uh, close to where it crosses over.
So the road's gonna be higher?
We catch grade. No, we're, we're catching grade, and then we're gonna able to get back up underneath that box cover. Um, but remember, we're relocating the water lines on the south side of the road. And TCEQ tells us that water line and wastewater line have to be separated nine-foot. That's outside and outside. And so not only do we need to have room between that box cover and that sanitary sewer line, we've also gotta provide spacing between the sanitary sewer line and the water. And then the water line, you know, we need to have some room off of the edge of the easement or property line or whatever that is to be able to install that.
Can you, that's what you, that's what you're talking about. Can you do a bore?
Uh, so, so we haven't gotten to that conversation, but, but, you know, and I've heard people talk about losing trees, and you're absolutely right. Some vegetation is gonna have to be removed. Um, just because there's a tree there doesn't mean it has to be removed. There are alternative methods, and you can probably help speak to that more so than I am because I'm not an ardent, I'm an engineer. There are, there's air spading, there's hydrojetting, there's boring. There's all of those things that can happen. Um, I don't know that any of those things guarantee that the tree survives.
They're expensive.
I mean, and you're right, they're expensive. But, but they offer, they offer, I think they better offer a better chance than trenching through that cover.
Oh, damn right.
So, I mean, there are alternatives, but, but nothing is a guarantee.
So Bartlett Tree basically said, for me, to use the same example, there are two red oaks that are in between us, same problem, um, that the balancing of the tree needs to be re, reestablished. So I will, I have to lose half of the canopy on the riverside of my tree. That's the, as he said, you're not gonna like it. It's gonna be a very bad haircut. Um, like, half your head is gonna get cut off, and you're gonna have hair only on one side. And then, um, if they, in your case, one reason I'm against the second lane is I have low-lined branches on the street side. Those all have to come up twelve, fourteen feet, which is what I was told. So, which is all the canopy I have on that side of that tree. So I basically have to.
Oh, that's with a two-lane.
Yeah, with a two-lane, because they've gotta put a road access.
What you have to understand is that whether it's one lane or two-lane or anything, this entire project is going to still kill.
Well.
A whole lot of very.
Boring, which I, I was in the pipeline business. Boring is very extremely accurate.
Yeah.
Boring's very accurate.
Yep.
There could be studies done, and I think.
No, Bartlett said, you can, there's a lot of things you can do to save a tree.
Boring's the best way you could do it.
He said, you have to.
Get around the root connection.
Yeah, you would say you bore it, but you have to prep the tree in advance with the, with cutting it back to handle the, uh, the lack of, of support that the roots are gonna provide.
Yeah.
And then you have to go back and, you have to go back and aerate and, um, and fertilize the tree in order to.
Good.
Make sure, and also provide water. And so like, I have a sprinkler system. Just to relocate my sprinkler system's gonna be over three thousand dollars to remove that whole section and then put it in after this is done. So, uh, Bartlett Tree came back and has worked on a plan, and it's very expensive to save just the one red oak. Obviously, I would tell you the same thing would have to be applied to the two red oaks in the front.
There's ponds, there's red oaks, there's, it's. Okay, so like, as a born tree hugger, like, here's something that's just like, very, seems that humans seem to miss a lot, is that the reason it floods to begin with is because we cut down the trees. That's why it floods. So what people don't seem to understand is that you can't solve a problem by implementing the same thing that created the problem to begin with. So once you remove all of these trees, like Dorothy was saying, you look down the road, you have changed the entire microclimate of this whole area. So an area that was very shaded, that had very healthy soil, had lots of live organisms living there, it's all gone. It turns to desert. The desert creates erosion. Erosion creates more flooding. So these are very simple concepts, and they are laws of nature. And we are going completely against the laws of nature by doing this. You cannot prevent flooding by removing the number-one thing. No matter how much humans try, they cannot do what nature can do. She can stop the flooding. Trees stop the flooding. Vegetation stops the flooding. Helping soil stops the flooding. But humans coming in and chopping down trees does not help flooding. But humans coming in and chopping down trees does not help flooding.
Can I make a suggestion? Can we can we go this way, just for information? The ten feet, like you talked about the ten feet, we go to one lane, you gain you gain ten feet back, take measurements, see exactly what that ten feet gives you and then then have a study or find and do a boring the water line, a boring the water line around these trees.
Sir, Marty said he would he's gonna bore the water line.
So we, you could have a have an expert say, what are the odds if you bore under this canopy of this tree, what are the odds it will not survive? Instead of blanket, trench is gonna kill, trench is gonna.
We're not trenching.
So boring is 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 an option, but the ten feet, is there any way we could work on the ten feet?
What they're saying is that's not doable.
Why is it not doable?
Because.
Perpetual easement.
Okay, what I'm saying is the temp, I'm saying the temporary road, I'm not talking about utilities.
Well, either way, they're going to, the temporary road will help a great deal because right now the temporary road, um, is particularly on the the red oats in between our property is very, very close to, it's inside the canopy.
So.
Um, of of those.
So for your situation, if you had the one lane, that would that would be.
It would help, it helps the tree because you're not putting, you're, you know, the whole thing is you're putting a compact drainage driveway, if you will, right over.
To have a conversation without the map of the tree up, like people need to see the tree. They need to see the height, they need to see where this is being laid, we need a visual right now.
Good point.
So I can stick here and show you, okay, if we do this, this tree's gonna get taken out. If we do this, that tree's gonna get taken out.
That's a good point.
Why don't we have that? I emailed and asked for that and no one gave it to me.
I've got, I've got some stuff here that we.
Look, yeah, real real quick, I'm getting confused on this point, maybe other people are, that's the only reason I bring it up. This one lane thing. It it sounds to me that it's not really the problem, it sounds to me like the problem is 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 you have to have nine, you have to have a pipe with ten feet on each side. And another pipe, another ten feet on each side, and ten plus ten equals twenty. Is that is that kind of, that's what's causing the the extra footage? Even if that's, it's the pipes, it's not necessarily the accident.
The permanent utilities.
Yeah.
The permanent utilities are required to go with.
It's not the road.
And like, like, why should you just explain your situation with your tree?
The more root, the more people drive over a a roof, underneath a tree, in the critical critical root space of the tree, the more compactified the roots of the tree thereby not letting them exchange gases.
So are we not discussing then the boundary line, we're discussing the implementation?
Well, I'm not having that one, that's a whole other issue.
That's the patient problem.
But I was getting this, it sounds like they're different issues, probably separate, related but separate.
They're related because, yeah.
The boundary line is one.
The boundary line is is a problem because I don't, like I said, no one, the original plan was sixty-six feet. I went and marked it and the original stakes that were put up, I were put up at the six, at the sixty-six foot wide, which was done in January of twenty twenty-two. You remember where they were, I have some were on my phone. Then they came back a year later and now all of a sudden it's ten feet further in. And that's why we, I come to this meeting and go, and I get this plan and go, what the fudge is he talking about? We had these stakes down, remember they resurveyed and they added these new set of surveys and now there's actually, if you look, there's actually a metal pin now in the property, in between the property that is where this new easement is going to be right away.
But it sounds like we're screwed either way, because even if they moved the road or whatever, you know what they're saying, whatever's going in underground is gonna kill the roots anyway, right?
Well, if you, if boring, boring versus open.
Boring helps, boring helps a great deal, but you still have to prep the tree for the events.
On top of the roof.
Mr. Breland had to say.
You 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 bring up a good point about the original stakes and then stakes later. I I haven't seen your property personally, I don't know, but I think maybe what that was is the original stakes that you saw may have been identifying the original existing right-of-way.
No.
Once we designed and planned, then what you saw the second time was the the staking of the backside of his. I know they did come back out and state the limits of what was gonna be proposed to be the right-of-way in order to prepare the documents you got.
He had he had to state, I I put flags on my property across the hallway and I had him there for six months um, showing where the sixty-six feet were was across and he basically had put it almost within a foot of where I had manually.
Okay, yeah, I I.
Yeah.
It was an offer.
Yeah. And then and then he came back with this new proposal, the whole proposal that was originally presented to the council.
And that's the one we voted on.
Uh, two years ago, it was kinda like, oh, it's no big deal. But no one understands until you actually go and drive this this beautiful street, you understand what the implications of this is going to be.
Yeah, these are the, these are the sheets that show some of those trees.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is, this is from that January this year. Yeah.
Well, and I'm 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 wondering if there isn't another issue. Why didn't they consider putting that down the other side of this road? There's no trees there.
So so as I mentioned, we have a lot of localized drainage coming to Northwest River Road, not from across eighty but to it. There's an existing drainage issue up there that we've gotta capture and convey that drainage. There's existing fiber lines there and there's an existing sanitary sewer line. So that area was, um, kind of pretty
More expensive.
Pretty consumed with the property.
Right, but those are those that replace.
We did evaluate.
But the trees are not replaced.
Exactly.
So we, I mean, if you look down that side of the road, there isn't anything.
It's already open, there's a ditch there and I don't wanna take.
And if it's just more money.
It's her side of the road and she's telling, you know, city and take. Yeah, makes more sense.
Yeah.
That that was an evaluation, uh, and and I believe that, you know, we evaluated those conditions. I think we brought that to council in one of those meetings. Um, we evaluated different drainage options.
I don't think things that they, they're really issues that I I was the only one, I think, that was sitting in the audience at the time, not a council, who understood what this is going to be because I can tell you, because I brought, I asked several people in council before I was here, they understood how how wide they were doing it and everybody kinda looked at me like, you're you're smoking crack, Matthew. I'm like, no, I'm not smoking crack, they're gonna come all the way to, they're gonna go twenty more feet into the property.
I understood, I didn't wanna believe it, I was like, there's no way they can do this, this isn't happening.
No, no.
This is not happening.
The nine, the nine of the way, I ain't killing you.
So what's wrong with the road, what's wrong with the infrastructure itself besides the old road, nothing, right?
The existing roadway?
Yes, sir.
Oh.
It's all dilapidated, I mean, it's.
Well, I mean, my son. Road driving on.
Well, no, you're absolutely right. That's one of the better roads, that's one of the better roads.
I mean, it's an old road, it's, are you using it today? Absolutely, absolutely, but but remember, what I said in the beginning is this grant money is primarily a drainage project.
Right, and that's where.
And the road and the utilities are just subsidiary to that because in order to implement the drainage improvements, it required some utility.
Right, so what's wrong with the road actually is it's physical condition, other than that, it's infrastructure, infrastructure is fine.
Uh.
Well, but it's putting the culvert under the road.
Right. I mean, it's it's aged, it's appears to be functioning, I don't know if there's anything wrong with it.
Right.
Uh.
So what if we.
However, but there's the drainage component.
The drainage comes off the field this way, it shoots this way, I've done a bunch of drainage in my life. Why can't we make a watershed drainage that goes around that neighborhood, go around into the property she just bought and comes back around the start, captains, in front of captains and rains into the river somewhere.
Well, that was one of the options and I do have those.
And we all come this way and this way, we make a culvert system or just a low-water crossing kind of thing.
And again, if this.
And our board's just concrete.
A non, under your flood.
Right.
So we're talking about.
We research this road, we build culvert behind the neighborhood.
Those are the ones that.
Which ones?
So so as I mentioned, we evaluated several options and brought that to council. This was this was the direction we were given to move.
Yeah, it's.
That's my feedback.
There was one option to go through, but the problem is, you know, respectfully, I do not think that the majority of people understood that and and.
And and I'll be honest with you, I talked to Turk about that and I asked him, why have you not reached out to people? He goes, well, we have these city council meetings. And I'm like, you didn't mail a single thing out, no one has mailed out any single property owner until today. By the way, I had to hand deliver this, I was not mailed this. Because it was mailed to an address that's been not been on record for two years. Okay? So for me to walk in here and you telling me this is supposed to be, you know, the bar's pretty, they moved, they knocked down pretty low for me, you know.
Well, and even when you give that packet, it's.
Well, you have a map, it's telling you.
It's really vague, it doesn't really explain what's going on.
And I agree, but that's what, that's, I would have liked to at least seen this a year ago.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
I don't think we had a plan.
Um, we had.
In January, I I'll I'll.
Yes, because Matthew has been talking about this for a very long time.
Yes, there were versions of plans, but
Yeah.
until until the full engineering is done on it.
I understand, this.
But it's not complete.
I understand, but you you know, there's, these people did not, no one here.
That had an idea.
But we should have been informed that trees were gonna be removed.
Literally having to talk to people directly.
Before the options, like if you're if you're saying, okay, well, we had a meeting where we told everyone the options and we gave the community an opportunity to speak, but you didn't give the community informed consent, you didn't actually explain to them what was going on so they could choose their options, then it wasn't really giving people options, because how are we to know? Like if you had said to me, in this option, this is what you have to give up, in this, but that that it was, it's been so vague. Everything has been so vague.
We did.
You didn't say to me, hey, your trees, all of those trees are gonna get taken out.
No, we did not go around marking trees, right.
Yes, and you should have, because that would have been, everyone would have come together and said, no, choose a different option. Choose a different option, we don't want this option for our city, absolutely. So that didn't happen.
How many, how many heritage trees are being affected?
A lot, a lot, a lot.
I've only got two left after those four, except for the cypress on the river.
And when we discussed those options, there was like an option, like you said, to go between my property and the neighbor's property.
Yeah.
And then there was an option to go through the governed property to be at the water dam. There was still the option of taking the buyback down the middle of the road. And we did have a lot of people here and talked about, we weren't talking about trees, but we did talk about the three different options. One of the things we talked about with those options was once the project is done, there's perpetual care that the city would be allowed for for the rest of eternity. And so looking at the different options, we chose to just go down the middle of the street.
But how can you treat if you weren't considering the trees when you're considering those third options, if you weren't really considering those third options?
I don't know that that was a question at that point in time.
Well, that's a mistake, you should have been.
I don't think it was, it wasn't presented as even a problem until Matthew measured it out and showed me and I'm like, what? What are you talking about? And that's when I look up and down the street and I'm like, these people need to know. And, oh, they're gonna find out. Here we are.
So as we look towards solving problems, would it make sense to do a like a three-for-one tree replacement program or anything like that if if there, these trees are impacted? I mean, would that, would that be a viable compensation to overcome the the destruction of those trees?
There, um, we have, we have a quote and Bartlet would also said they could come out and do it for everybody there. Matthew, if our tree dies and we had to replace it with the same tree, how much would that cost?
Hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars.
For one tree?
Just to cut it down, how much would it cost to cut down that tree?
I'm pretty cheap, I'd say sixty-five million.
Yeah. Bartlet said it would be, we'd definitely north of ten, he said.
Yeah. No, and I agree with you, you.
You know.
How do you value thirty-inch of tree?
That is a valid question.
There is a form.
So I actually just.
I'm not the guy out here wanting to pay for the water.
One of the things I'm upset about.
I am, but I'm not.
I I'm playing in two boroughs because I knew where, I knew where the quote-unquote, please, I thought I knew where the easement was gonna be. And they're not even on your plan, I just bought, I just put them in two and a half years ago and they're gone.
This survey was done.
No, no, they were there, they were there, they were there, they didn't record them.
There was, within your property, it may not.
They're more than you, though.
There was.
There was a number of.
They were within your property.
There's a number of community on Zoom who wants to speak.
Okay.
Mr. Tom, can you hear us?
Oh, this is Bonnie, this is Bonnie McCarroll.
Oh, Bonnie's.
Okay, so these are the people that are next to us in Hawaii.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, again.
Well, um, I would like to say. There sure is a lot of.
Here's the shoe tree.
Yeah.
Just a moment.
Wait, wait, y'all, someone's trying to speak.
Listen to ours.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, well, I'm Bonnie McCarroll, um, we own property at two eleven Northwest River Road. And several of these trees, I think, that we've been talking about are on our property. And I have to go back to what Patricia said about the original reason for doing this. And I know it's to abate flooding. We lived on the property for, I think, forty years. So we saw our share of flooding, but the majority of significant flooding that happened actually came from the San Marcos River, not from the front of the property. It's true, when we did have, um, big storms, there were a few times that the water came up from the front. But I'm just wondering, is this project really even necessary? And you have, you have historical data on how many lives have been lost between the shoes tree and Lockhart's tree? I I don't think any. Um, how many people have been injured? And how many properties have actually been flooded from flooding coming in from the front side? And when I say the front side, I mean not from the river.
I I know when we submitted the grant, we did not look at, we did not have any data on people dying within this area of this project during a flood event, at least during a recent flood event.
Do you have data, do you have data on the number of homes that were impacted by actual flooding into the home?
I'm not sure if we have the exact numbers, but we definitely have photographic evidence that we used in our grant application that showed um, the road completely submerged for significant stretches.
Well, yes.
Which poses a risk to emergency management, um, when they try to do evacuations and the rest um, and respond to emergencies along other, along, uh, other properties down that, down that road.
Well, yeah, but you could, you could always go around that area by going up to Highway eighty and then down again, so you could pretty much access most of River Road.
I got another solution, I just wanna go back on my septic tank, you don't have to put a wastewater on my side, it's still happening.
Oh, we still have ours too.
And it's actually still being used. We we don't even have all of our sewer connected to the wastewater system going to Markdale, half of our water still goes to our septic tank in the back.
Bonnie brings up a really good point, because when I read that in the packet, I thought it was fear mongering, because it was like, oh, this is to prevent loss of life and this is to prevent blah blah blah, and it's like, people do that to get people in a near state and like, oh, we're doing this because it's good for you. And it's like, no, we're telling you it's not what's good for us and we're giving you very clear reason why it's not what's good for us. And then you're telling us hypothetical scenarios where someone could possibly get hurt or something could possibly flood and we're telling you, we've been here, we've lived through floods, we know what happens when it floods, we're good with it. Right, uh, we're good. Right, okay, so.
Yeah.
Some floods have happened and just like the hurricanes coming through Florida, they evacuate. We had time to evacuate. My mother, who they were afraid was something, she went by her ground and stayed there for a night just in case her house flooded. She had plenty, plenty of notice. The house did not flood, everything was fine, thank goodness. But yeah, we had, if that comes to it, you know, and Jared, you're talking about emergency management and, um, emergency, for the jet rescue and, you know, stranded people or whatever.
Well, it's it's not only like in a, you know, regional flood event like twenty fifteen, it's also during a rainstorm in in May and somebody needs a medical emergency and it's just a rainstorm in the roads. So the covered in water, that it becomes a risk.
Well, I will tell you, when they did, when they did the survey work, when the gal came in to do the survey work, she did a really good job fixing the road because she drank out that drainage bridge and we had very little water pool anymore. And actually Bill went over, I was there watching him do it, he went and shuffled a little bit better culvert. So we don't have any water pooling over over here anymore.
You can always drive through it, it's just runoff, if you have a little better smoke on the road, a little better road, don't we allocate that money to resurgence in the road and just make a ditch in the culvert behind the neighborhood? And that seems like, there we go.
Yeah, yeah.
I realize there's more work to do in that, but it's just.
I mean, they're just, obviously, I mean, I'm just, I I wanna make sure that if we're all expelling our energy right now, that there really are other options, right?
Right.
Like, or are we just talking just to talk? Like, are there really other options, are we actually going to be offered different options now or is this all a waste of our time?
My understanding is that the grant proposal was was for a drainage system like this and that anything else would have to go through a reengineering and a resubmission and a hope and a prayer that the state approves it. And then we have less than eight months to do all of that and then finish construction. So effectively, based on timeline, either the city's gonna get the benefit of a seven million dollar grant under this design or it's not gonna get any benefit at all. or it's not gonna get any benefit at all.
Jared, two years ago, we started talking about, about this. And Turk was talking about his timeline has changed drastically.
Some, some of the delays have been caused by the, the need to do environmental work related to the cemetery. And to have Texas State Historical Organization, I forget if it's commission or what, review the, the scrape and dig that we had, identify, making sure we weren't gonna impact unknown grave sites and then other things. And then it's, it's delays at the state level and getting approvals. We, we, we can only get to this point after we receive the go-ahead from the state. And for the most part, we've been waiting kind of six months for it. And we weren't sure how everything was gonna work out. And so we didn't get to this stage until about three weeks.
That make, that could another point. Can I, can we at least, can we at least look into the deal about going one, a one-way, taking ten less feet from the folks' property, do a directional drill, maybe get an arborist to see the impacts of these trees if we're doing a direction, no open trench, a directional drill on those heritage trees?
So, so we are in the process of finalizing plans, which this input and feedback's good. You know, like I mentioned, boring, hydro jetting, air spading, those are all alternatives that can be considered and put in. To be honest, we're confined to a budget. If we do these things that cost more money in one place, we may have to evaluate cost-saving measures in another place. Just full transparency.
I'll tell you, Turk already said that he already had that, all the boring.
Yeah.
It was already, he said it right in front of my wife and I, that's already on the plan.
It's already on the plan. And then he said.
He said that's not additional.
Additional money that we may be able to go down to Bull Run.
So.
Okay, so, so the boring's already been discussed, correct?
I talked to Turk about it. All, all the water line will be done with the boring. The water line's the closest to the trees. It's the one, it's sewer. So it's box culvert, then sewer, then water. Okay, the water needs eight feet, I think is what he told me. Is it nine?
Nine from the other sewer line.
Yeah, so, okay, so the boring's been established, or they agreed to the boring. Let's go with the, like I say, like I said, the one-way, give the landowners ten feet back and see where we.
Well, we're not gonna get ten feet back because they're gonna put a water, the water line movement is not moving. That's what.
Yeah, but I'm saying the temporary road.
Well, the temporary road helps.
The temporary road will keep, will keep that road encroaching on the trees.
It will, a great deal.
Some trees, my trees.
Well, your trees, your trees are toast in the corner. They're gone.
All of the trees on McCarroll's property. They're all gone.
Those elves right there about.
Like, I'm pointing at the things that are in the screen.
The McCarroll's, the McCarroll's.
They're inside a computer.
The, the red oaks that are on the, 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 right now, the easement is right through the two big red oaks. Okay, it's right through them. So that means the water line is four feet, three and a half to four feet away from that line. That's where the water line's gonna be.
You mean red oaks on my place?
No, on the McCarroll's.
So those would be bore, those would be a bore on the next those trees.
But the, but just, I'm just, there's, there's the whole, this is why I'm gonna be, I'm gonna laugh at this, okay? Because it's, you know, giving me any amount of money, it's, I'm just gonna spend every penny of this just to try to save my trees.
Right. And that's, that was the question.
I'm gonna spend over twenty grand to save my trees.
Good.
Yeah. And Mayor, I was, I had a question on what you said about taking care of the term, care of the property. Does that mean taking care of the trees that are trying to survive after the project? Because that's a lot of money. It's gonna add up.
Well, not if they're on private property.
Yeah, they're not gonna, this.
No, this was talking about actually the, the viaducts or whatever you call them that would go under the earth to transfer the water
Right.
away from the road to the river.
Right.
There were different options and different.
Yeah, that, that was, all that meeting was about, was to put it between the mayor and the, and her neighbor's house. Okay, which actually, I, I was there, you know, that was, from a flow standpoint, that was the worst one because you're going against the flow
Right.
of the river.
Yeah.
And so you know there's a risk of what happens to the other side, and we're now liable. The other was to go through my property, the same problem. You're going across to a low area on, on the other side, and you can't go directionally down. You have the same problem. You're potentially, you're gonna ruin the people across the river's embankment area, and you'd then be responsible for it. And that left, by default, the original plan, which is going down to a natural curvature of way. And it's, and there's no one next to it. You know what I mean? There's, you're not impacting anyone downstream. You know, this is the cemetery. And that was where nature put it. So why go against nature, if you will? That was the pathway that nature created, and man worked around it for the last hundred and fifty years. Let's continue with that workaround.
Yeah, that part makes sense. When you get the water out from the front of the house, it's a little different. I mean, how much really piled up there? You can do some erosion control techniques.
I think one of the things that we talked about also is, we have this natural culvert that is on the other side of the road, correct? And we're now gonna be removing, if you will, from a flood event, a lot of water that would normally be funneled, if you will, into that particular culvert. Okay?
You're talking about the borrowed ditch on the north side of the road?
On the north side, right.
Right.
So why do we need a culvert that big anymore?
So that, that borrowed ditch on the north side of the road.
If we're, if we're, if we're removing.
It doesn't carry much water.
It, yeah, I know, but I, it's, it's, it works really good for up to seven or eight inches right now. It's not a problem. And, and, and I agree. I know exactly what you're talking about. It goes behind plains, there's a low wide, low area, comes across, goes behind your house, comes into that, you know, the lot across the street or, or next to your property right now, it dips in there. But if the, the water, that culvert, doesn't really need to be that big going forward. If we're gonna do what we're saying we're gonna do, why can we not move, move laterally that way? And acquire some land?
Ten foot, seven, twenty foot culvert. It's really just drainage. It's not gonna.
If we, if we remove the capacity of anything on the north side of the road, then we could potentially be having a negative impact on that property. We can't do that. We have to maintain at least what's there currently now. So if it were to be, if, if something were to happen on that side of the road, that ditch would just need to be moving over.
No, I don't agree with you because the, the water that is feeding into that, you already alluded to. The water that's feeding into that is now being funneled into these culverts.
So a majority of the water from the opposite side of Highway eighty that comes through the culverts there, and the localized drainage behind your neighborhoods in these fields, comes to a point. There's still a lot of localized drainage from the backs of these areas that come to it. I've, I've done hydraulic analysis, and I appreciate that. But it's my seal that goes on these plans, and I'm not gonna have a negative impact.
You didn't even, you didn't even consider that?
No, we did. I'm just saying that any kind of, any kind of improvement on the north side of the road, it would have to maintain those existing drains.
You told me something differently, Turk, because Turk said you guys never even considered it when he sat at my house. Did you ever? So he, I specifically asked him that question.
I think there's two different statements. One is, is, was it part of the design?
No, no, no.
So one was, was it considered in the analysis? I think what Gary's telling you, was it considered in the analysis, but it was not considered in the design?
I specifically went over that with her, and my wife was there. And I asked him about that. I said, why, if you are gonna be moving so much of the water flow that is the problem, that's actually not even making it to the, the, the pass, because it's going behind the, the two, my neighbor across the street's, you know, property. It doesn't actually enter the culvert until my property on the others, on, on that side. That's where it starts. Okay? That's where the culvert begins. There is no really need for a culvert before that, but it's going around the property. It's not going to the street. The street is higher. You look at plains, plains actually dips down as you go into it. The water comes.
A lot of water comes through it.
Comes behind these people's property. It was obviously not a well-planned idea when that was done.
Agreed.
You know.
That's the high spot. I'm close right there. Just.
Yeah.
On the ski route.
The, yeah, so the intersection of plains and North River Road is the high spot in that whole area. And then actually, when it gets really bad, the water comes across the prop, the road to my house and drains right into the, the right side of my property.
Agreed.
And I've been there when it's done. It's kind of cool. But you, you're gonna remove most of that with the culvert.
Some of it. There's, there's still the localized drainage coming from, you know, the general area north of this roadway. A lot of it will be channeled back, you know, through here, but they're still drainage coming from this area toward the roadway. And then you're right, that natural channel picks up somewhere here, and then it goes down here and it crosses over the road currently.
And the elevation is going this way, though.
Generally speaking, most of the elevation is going towards the river.
So some of that water that was coming across from Highway eighty will now not go, once the project's done, it wouldn't go behind the houses on Plains Drive. Is that true?
To an extent. That's right. Remember, the hundred-year event, this, this system, these improvements here are designed to handle about the ten-year event. So.
Yeah.
Still beyond that, if the system becomes full, then natural drainage patterns will still continue. Like I said, Derek, you know, during the hundreds, this, this area is within the one-hundred-year flood plain, FEMA map flood plain. So during the one-hundred-year flood plain, Northwest River Road's still gonna have water.
Yeah.
Wait, so we're not actually preventing anybody's home from flooding? This does not prevent anyone's home from flooding.
Nope.
Not at all. So I don't understand. I do not understand why we're doing this. It doesn't make any sense. I want to go back to the question. It was kind of briefly brought up and then put to the side. So again, can it not be done on the other side of the street? Can we not put all this on the other side of the street? This would solve everyone's issues right now.
I just proposed that, and you said no.
It's, it's absolutely not possible to do it on the other side of the street.
Well, we have to put utilities on both sides of the street is part of the problem, right?
There, there are existing utilities on the north side of the road. We are putting new utilities on the south side of the road as well as within the street. So the entire right-of-way would have utilities, drainage infrastructure, water, wastewater, communications, electric, I mean.
But right now, the south side is, is having more land taken than the north side. So can we just not?
Only the south side.
Maybe it was a cost.
So why can't we do it the other way around?
I believe it was a cost consideration because of the cost of, of moving the communication and electrical on the street. But it was, would be substantially higher.
So what about taking one, two conduits, now the one conduit, and adding that drainage behind the neighborhood like I was saying? Can you add that into, can you determine that?
Are you talking about the storm sewer culvert going down Northwest River Road?
Yeah, if you condense that down to one, and you were saying you had to have what was there before. But if you add a supplemental drainage ditch behind, what's the neighborhood across the road from there?
Oh, okay.
That will allocate enough runoff to.
But, but, but if, if we put something behind the neighborhoods on Northwest River Road, we still have to have a way to get it through and across.
Right. Well, we'll come out to drainage where it is right now, I would think.
And that's.
He doesn't want to go through anything else's property.
It's just, I mean, it's empty farm then.
Right. And so, no trees, no trees are cut down for that.
Still gotta get to the river, totally.
Well, I mean, it'll come to her property is what I'm saying. Just make a drainage ditch behind the neighborhood. It'll catch, it's a catchment, it'll catch all that. You can collect your box, all kinds of, you know, erosion cool stuff, and it'll bring it right into the other bucket. Just go behind that neighborhood.
And that, but there's, there's no land to, there's no one's property to get to the road again. So you have the house at the corner, you know, right across, right across from one oh five. The lady has the blue house with her, but then you have a church. And then you have a two and a, two and a half acre roughly tree, tree-infested property, you know, lot.
Yeah, I would think you could go through there and it's fine.
So.
Well, we do need to wrap up this workshop because we have a city council meeting. And so we have, well, could we maybe do this again next week?
I don't have a problem.
And it'll give people time to think about what's happening. I think when the project started a couple of years ago, we all thought it was a really good idea to try to mitigate flooding issues in the area. And so now it's just getting real, real, what's gonna happen to each individual's piece of property. And so it gives us all a lot to think about. And if you would like, we could meet here again next week. Would you like to do that?
Well, I just want to ask again.
Only if Mr. Turk is here.
Yeah.
Well, we'll confirm.
Yeah, no, no.
We can confirm.
You're absolutely right. Yes, and, and I will get with him. We can check his schedule. We can come up with a couple of alternatives.
Couple of different dates, and then.
I don't know if you have to know this, or you can have it next week, the week after. I mean, there's a little bit of a rush, as Jared alluded to, but I don't think a week's gonna kill anything.
Right.
And if there's anybody who would like to walk in and see.
So I thank you all for coming, and if you want to stay at your city council, you're welcome to do so.
Okay, well, I'm gonna pull a Julia butterfly, and we'll, we'll change those trees, though. It's not happening.
I know. I, I just want to say I appreciate everybody's feedback and questions. They're all very good. They're very valid. And, and, and this is not an easy seat to sit in, but I appreciate it. I just, you know.
Am I still on?
Yes, you are, Mayor. Do you want me to mute you?
No, can I say something?
Oh, yeah, the engineer's right here.
Did you have any specific questions?
Oh, I forgot.
People are leaving the room, but you have a question for the engineer? I have it right here close.
Um, yeah, who, who is that man in the blue shirt?
He's Gary Freeland. He's part of our, he's one of the principal engineers. With, uh, Freeland and Turk.
What is his name?
Gary Fre, Gary Freeland. He's one of the principal engineers.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, no, I guess the question I wanted, I wanted to propose to this.
Yeah. Okay, we'll post, we'll be sure to post the, the next meeting on our website.
Yeah.
That takes place.
Who are you?
Someone's speaking to you. I'm the city administrator, Jared Anable.
City administrator, Jared?
Yeah, with the city. Yes.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I, I had my hand raised, but I wasn't able to acknowledge me. That's why I couldn't speak. I hit on my question.
We'll, we'll get that approved next time around. Sorry about that.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
On September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and I will do roll call first. Uh, let's see if I can remember who everybody is. Mayor Prochan Villalobos is absent. Uh, council member McGovern.
Here.
Council member Styler.
Here.
Council member McClab.
Here.
Council member Clinton.
Here.
And I am Mayor Gleis. If you would please stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And to the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And then please remain standing for the invocation. Dear gracious heavenly Father, Lord God, thank you so much for the rain that you've given us. Thank you, heavenly Father, for this beautiful rural city. And thank you for the freedom that we have to come here and express our views and just this form of democracy. And heavenly Father, we just ask that you be with us as we just try to form this government and be civil with one another. And we just thank you, Lord, for your gift of salvation. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, we have Mary Beth Harper is our first public comment.
Okay, first of all, thank you to the city council for budgeting the library for twenty-four thousand dollars this year, twenty twenty-four. We appreciate that. Thank you. Uh, our library contract's still. Okay, I bring events, can the health and wellness fair was this past weekend, and we had. Okay, I bring events, can the health and wellness fair was this past weekend and we had fifteen vendors, we have Helen, office of those outside, area agency on aging, Dell Children's Hospital, AOP, Craig's Wellness, all kinds of things. Okay, Saturday, October fourteenth, there's eleven oh one is a solar eclipse warning. And we have ordered sunburn glasses, we found this place, it's in place of four, so we haven't gone out yet, so I hope we get them. Okay, Saturday, October twenty first, spend the day in Morendale, instead of X, it's a dollars, I spend the day in Morendale. It is a fall family festival from ten to twelve. That's for folks of all ages, bouncy house, string ride, games, and so on. The Friends of the Library is having a fundraiser, solid auction, and that's from ten to two. And San Marcos River Foundation is also having a fundraiser from one to five, and they're gonna be on two oh four Main Street. Okay, ours, the Friends of the Library will be in Brooksville. And then October twenty sixth, that's Thursday, five thirty, seven thirty, there's a pre legal device clinic, and I'll have a handout for this, here to you, and if anybody else thinks this, okay, these folks are going to church, the games, the raffles, and also here in Morendale Library. And that's gonna be October twenty sixth, and this is free, and they're really good information. On Saturday, October eleventh, it's Veterans Day, it's a day of service by Gamma Delta Paternity at Texas State. Coming to Morendale to do service for Morendale veterans and little widows, and just call the library for his appointment. Okay, on Friday, December the first, the annual tree lighting, Santa lights through the neighborhoods. And they reminded me I need to contact Chris Germer to get a truck available. Okay, the library will have letters to Santa, Christmas activities, and so on. There's also a fundraiser, it'll be inside of Brooksville, there's vendors, things, and so on in there. Okay, now, the library has been doing programs for people of all ages, from pre kindergarten all the way through senior citizens. One of the things I have there on the tables is colorful little brochure, and this is, okay, follow up for summer reading program. And right in the middle, right there, summer reading program, summer reading. For twenty five adults, fourteen teens, and fourteen children sign up to participate. And the total number of minutes read, this is amazing, eighty six thousand five hundred ninety minutes read. There's children, then the adults, seventy four thousand three hundred twenty nine. That was amazing, that's way more than we ever had in the past. And then the summer programs, and there's pictures of all the different events down there, and just one from the mermaid's down through the bottom. On other sides, some of the other things that we're doing, like Storytime, Lego Club. And the summer reading was run by a grant from Dollar General and also Save the Children, and we appreciate the money they gave us. Okay, some other information, and then Mermaid Society, this was in yesterday's San Marcos paper, that's another thing that you have. They're giving away three books to all the San Marcos schools, elementary schools, and also the pre-k school. And these books are ecology themed, and the mermaids have been here in Morendale three different times. And they, this three book program, this started with three libraries, the San Marcos Library, the Wintley Library, and the Morendale Library. And they have been down here, they do a program, they do, they read some books, have them the children have some mermaid themed activities. And this last time they were here, they had mermaid cookies. And they're having their, some annual mermaid capital Texas fest, this is coming Saturday at ten AM. And finally, the San Marcos City Council talked to Commissioner McClab a while ago. This past Tuesday at their meeting, they voted unanimously to start drafting ordinance on the single use containers. One of the groups that I belong to said that they appreciate the Morendale City Council members, McClab was there, who else was there?
Me.
Okay, good, okay.
And Sam.
Sam, Sam spoke, I spoke. It was a great turnout.
Thank you. Okay, Garrett, I don't know how to say your last name.
Desett Slager. So are we talking about our views today? I didn't see that on the agenda.
Yes.
Sam first, he invited me to talk about that, okay. So first, I wanted to introduce myself, my name's Garrett Desett Slager. For those of you, I don't believe I've met any of you personally except for, for Sam. A little bit about me, I am a homeowner, we own several properties at the end of the road on Main Street. I'm a veteran, I own several businesses, small businesses, I'm a Christian. And most importantly, a thing I'm proud of most is I'm a dad. And so to me, the reason I'm telling you that is because you don't know me. And so obviously, my opinion, I would like to hold some sort of merit towards that. And the reason I'm speaking here today, for one, Sam informed me that I would have some, some sort of, it would concern me, so I needed to be here, so I appreciate you for doing that. And so secondly, if we're changing ordinances, the, the main thing, if we're changing ordinances, I have a slight concern with that. My concern would be why, the second reason, my second concern is obviously the floodway adheres to some pretty strict guidelines as far as FEMA and the state of Texas already. And so to further enforce those guidelines is an infringement on a landlord, on any landlord. And that's an extreme concern, and I will fight tooth and nail for it, and I want to just go ahead and put that out there. My RV is in no way violating any of those ordinances. And so my concern is why we're doing this now. Obviously, I have had some pretty extreme opposition here within the city. To name a few, I have, it took me several weeks to get water. I have electricity, no issues there. I was told I needed to pull a permit, I'm not building anything, so y'all couldn't show me where that was. I was told personally by the mayor over the phone that I was wasting their time. I'm extremely upset about that and concerned because this is a small enough town to where I don't feel like I'm wasting your time whenever I'm trying to get water at one of my homes. So it's a huge concern for me. I'm obviously open to, to having a fluid conversation, but that is a really big concern. And that's, that's the main reason I'm here. I trust my elected officials in any city I've ever lived in to fully comply with, with all of that. And I trust and I hope that you guys are doing that. And so today, if we are casting a vote towards changing in ordinance, I'm gonna be paying strict attention to who's doing it. And I promise you, I will, I will fight for it. And so that's all I'm gonna say to that. The other thing, want to point out that if we're focusing and we're targeting on just floodway people, RVs, that's an even, that's an even stronger concern. Because I know we have RVs all over the city that have been there, and I believe some council members have these in their yards that have been there for, since I can remember, longer than one eighty. I'm assuming, because I don't know where all of you live, I do a morning run, and I have been doing a morning run for quite some time, and I can see through on some garages, and I see a boat for somebody. And I know one of those has a motorhome in front of their house, right on River Road. And so that's a concern for me. So I really want to, want to be sure that you're fighting the right fight and that you're not taking away or infringing on people who own property in the city. It's a big deal to me. I cannot stress it enough, and if you fight me on everything, that's gonna be a really big problem, and I'm gonna take it as and I don't want to, I want to be civil, I'm an extremely nice guy. And so I would like to have that on record. And that's all I got to say, thank you guys.
Thank you. Okay, I have a couple of announcements. Carmen Zunica has given her notice, so she's one of our utility clerks. So she has some family health problems that she'll be dealing with. So one of our other clerks is going to take her day. So we still have two utility clerks, so that's good. And as Ms. Harper said, we have been talking with the library about the contract, so just let the council know that. I did want to talk about the sirens that I talked about a little bit. The county has purchased new batteries for the sirens, and they're in the process of getting those installed. They always have to get a lift truck to get to the, where the sirens are housed. And these are gonna be for emergency purposes if we were to have a flood. So Hank Alex from the emergency management had written back to me and said to start informing the public about the sirens. If we go on the same schedule as Lockhart, they do their sirens like the second Wednesday of each month. And if it's one minute, it is a test. If it's three minutes, it's like get to higher ground. So we're gonna be working on establishing some protocol in the next few months about the sirens. Did want to let you know about the fundraiser for the fire department on Sunday. Hope everybody can come and get a plate of barbecue, several of us are working on that. And they'll be talking about, you know, about the national night out for the police department on October the third, Tuesday night, October the third. Be right here in the downtown area, we'll be closing the streets. The city will be providing hot dogs and hamburgers, paper goods, lemonade. And then we're just asking other people to bring some desserts or potato chips or something to go along with that. I think it'll be really fun, the police are coming out and things to, to inform people about what they do and just to form a nice community in there. That's what I have to talk about, and so I'll turn it over to Jared.
Hey, good morning, or good evening, council, not morning. Hopefully, we're not here until the morning. So the two things I want to talk to you about are, the one, the first one, I had a conversation been to the front of council before on this idea of looking at possibly merging the city's utility services with the Morendale Water Supply Services and recognizing that there are possibility for significant savings and de-duplication of overhead costs and other things. Prior council gave, passed a motion to give me the ability to negotiate on behalf of the city and kind of passed out the willingness of Water Supply Corporation to entertain those, those activities. I sent the Water Supply Corporation board a letter proposing that they and the city would enter into a memorandum of agreement that would explore the options to merge our operations. And it would also set up some, how we would work towards exploring those options. It would charter a working group with representation from the city council and senior staff, and then also include representation from Water Supply Corporation and their board of directors and their city staff, or senior staff. And it also would identify, the MOA memorandum of agreement would establish whose cost sharing would, swap those would be if we were to hire out expert consultants, the way there's some of the financial issues that would be facing us. Water Supply Corporation has a significant amount of debt that's leveraged against their future revenue generating customers. The city would have to, if, if there was a full merger, the city would be in some way responsible for that debt. That's kind of, to look into it.
What kind of debt we talk about?
So last year's budget, they had about two million dollars in loans through the water development board and others that go towards purchasing water rights and some of their infrastructure. They're, they, I believe, are in negotiations now over significant water right purchasing that would have real hefty financial burdens on them, I don't know if they've classified as a debt yet, but they may have to take on debt in the future possibly.
Do they, I don't, you don't have to get too deep into this, but can, have they provided, I mean, obviously, this is pretty fresh, but paying my expenses.
So the Water Supply Corporation only passed a budget in the last, I think, two years. I think twenty twenty two was the first time in the nearly sixty or seventy year history of the, of the organization passing. But we had some insight on, on that through what they published, and it covers a lot of those debts and things. Well, it wouldn't be known until we hired some experts to help us through that analysis, not what they're maxed at, or what they'll look like. The, the thing is, is Water Supply Corporation serves a customer base of over a thousand customers.
Nine hundred forty eight.
Went down. The, this, this city, solid waste is about four hundred customers and wastewater's only about two hundred. We spend a lot of money to something that our council member McGovern has, has mentioned many times. We spend a lot of money trying to capture revenue. We, we employ, we spend about forty thousand dollars a year in utility clerks to handle the billing practices of our utility. They also spend a significant amount of money on their utility clerks. My mind, it makes a lot of sense that those same utility clerks could handle the customer base of our two organizations combined because there is substantial overlap. In fact, every customer that, of the city's utility is also a customer of Water Supply Corporation. The reverse won't be true because their, their jurisdiction extends to the city. So I proposed a letter to them that was, was kind of baby steps. Hey, let's agree to work together on developing a memorandum of agreement that would highlight how we're, and establish how we're gonna analyze these issues and charter a group to come back and provide some recommendations and some findings. They, last week, the Water Supply Corporation board directors met, discussed the proposal, and then rejected it. So what they're looking at is, they're in negotiations right now for significant water rights. And they do not want to have this issue distract their, their staff and the work on the calendar from, from the headline. Somewhat disappointing, I think there's a lot of, lot of savings that could be achieved. The other is the utility clerks, most operators, I believe our, our wastewater operator is also has certifications or had certifications on one point for clean water. The same is true for the Water Supply Corporation, their operators have, have dual certifications, almost uniformly, that's the case, that one comes with the other. Just in saving operator costs, that there's another tens of thousands of dollars a year. You, and creating some additional economies of scale and maintenance and things. And, and, and some infrastructure upgrades that can be made, meter reading, electronic meters, and those things. You, the combined economic power of the two organizations combined could possibly save a hundred thousand dollars or more, I think, potentially. That's just some back of the napkin, it would require some deep analysis to really suss that out, and unfortunately, they didn't want to participate in that.
How close was the vote, do you know?
They held in an executive session.
I was there, and we got kicked out.
So the only reason why I know that that outcome is, is I asked their general manager, Steve Fogle, hey, we had an executive session, what's our next steps? And he told me there is no, or next steps. And that tells me that they essentially discussed it and voted it down.
Did they reach out to you?
I intended to participate in person, unfortunately, I had some daycare issues, childcare issues that prevented me.
Initially, did they reach out to you?
They have been skeptical of this idea from the beginning, at least certain individuals on the board or in their senior staff have been skeptical about this. Their skepticism derives from, I think, multiple areas. The, how are customers outside of the city's corporate limits going to treat it, are they going to? Are they going to be have different rates inside? Are they going to be subject to forced annexation by the city? If they join the, if the city's providing the water, are they going to be forced to annex in the future? Also, the political um direction of the board of directors and their ability to influence the the policies and operations of the water company. Those those are all issues that I tried to address in our initial letter. And the proposal that we would consider, the city would consider establishing a commission with utility rate-setting authorities. That would be the makeup of at least representative of the customer base. The likely good majority outside of the city limits would be on that commission. It would be reflective of the current board membership. And then uh it would also, you know, MOA establish how annexation procedures would would operate in the future. The city has no designs to use this to to force annex. My my intent in in pursuing this is not to look towards annexation. This is, in my view, immediate savings for existing customers and the significant benefit of better bargaining position when we're in development. Right now, the city has nothing to offer.
They just rate the rates $25 a month, and they don't need to. They think they're they're golden now.
But, yeah, this, those rates are probably not going to stay stable. Their their costs, their their wire rights costs are just going to balloon up. And the fact that they're not part of a city with that, they are restricted from competing different water sources.
And I pitched that when you got off the phone with them. I pitched grants. I mean, there's things that we can do as a city that makes it available to them. And I got a few heads go, hmm, but there's only one person who lives inside the city on that board.
And and the um, yeah, grants is one, but also just the ability to buy into certain um large water resource projects. Um, they're excluded from even participating in.
That's strange because that Alliance Pipeline, Tal, Utah, Sam Marcus, Zegane, thirty-six inch line, they're not part of that.
So this is, this isn't really for, I don't want to get too far into the decision-making process for council tonight. So this is the the report on the agenda. But I want to come back to council in the near future with, here's what I think we can still do on our own as far as the next steps. Acquiring the Water Supply Corporation is not a question. The onus would be on us to figure it out by ourselves, and we want to have the benefit of them working as we have that. But it, that could be something that the council could consider in the future. There's some more work to do to what kind of cost would that cost the city to do the analysis and set that up.
And probably in the next few months, I'll have something.
Yeah, one, one, one thing I'll say that when I originally got a meter on my property, it was around $4,000, and the cost has gone up to $11,000 now. So these are costs that are way above the average citizen's ability to help the infrastructure to create new new homes in our cities.
Well, if you combine that with our wastewater taps, you're about $20,000 for the for a property owner trying to establish services. Twenty thousand dollars is is a lot of money. Uh, and 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 if you have one person, one company digging a hole and laying pipes, instead of two companies digging holes and laying pipes, there alone, you would think you'd get some efficiencies and costs.
Unfortunately, like, I've done it in multiple counties, and it's just how much it costs nowadays. It just costs a lot of money for the water.
About thirty-five to forty percent higher than most average.
From where?
Um, Houston, in, for example, several areas.
Houston.
Well, Matt, give me an example. Yeah, you're, you're, we're actually in one of the biggest opera areas around, so that's not actually.
We're getting off topic.
So, yeah, all these, all these things, anywhere there's a cost to a consumer, when you don't, when you have really backward economies of scale, you have no scale. We're not, we're not, we're not, we can drive down costs by increasing our customers and expanding the, expand the base, so to speak. So um, that's something we'll, unfortunately, it didn't work out. Uh, the next item, unless there's questions on, the next item is on the towing contract. Unfortunately, as I was working on these other issues, I haven't made progress on it, on on that contract yet. I just want to be upfront with council that there's been no movement on on that since our last meeting and last time we discussed it. And that's all I have for reports.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry. So Kevin, you're ready for the police report?
Hello.
Mayor, I have time to word on the line.
Oh, okay.
Oh, Chief is not actually here, but he is on watching Zoom.
Yeah.
She can hear us?
Chief.
Chief.
There you go.
Yes.
Oh, he's on the phone.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to meet you on my end. So I'll here to present our um August report from last month, or citations, warnings and whatnot. Uh, do you have the?
Put it up there.
Last month, we had a hundred and fifty total violations or contact. Um, forty-five of those were citations. Hundred, or sorry, reverse that. Forty-five of those were warnings, a hundred and five of those were citations. Um, chief has a breakdown of all of those that we had. Each violation and warning, I believe it's on the next page. That page shows the patrol activities. Essentially, the call for services that we had for last month, our activities, what we did and whatnot. Part take up a big part of that. We've got ninety-seven checks for that. You can read the numbers for the rest of that, thirty-three call for services and so on. We're trying to stay busy, trying to be visible, trying to be out there. Uh, as far as that, that's pretty much all on that. You can read through the numbers if you want to see exactly which ones break down work for those. Um, mayor mentioned National Night Out. Looking forward to having everybody here on October third. Uh, complete five team and I do, that's going to be down here. We're going to have some burgers, hot dogs, stuff like that. Meet us, boo hoo. Real heroes are showing up too. The fire department's going to be here to to be with us. Um, going to have some handouts and just have some, hopefully some fun activities for the kids and whatnot, and hope to see you guys there.
I I had a question.
Sure.
Um, I don't know if this is too soon since it happened for you to discuss the person that was apprehended. Uh, the naked guy walking around breaking in in into homes.
So refer that to the chief.
Okay.
For that.
Okay, okay, I thought so, so I I don't want you to mention it in the future.
Have the last name.
Uh, when? It just happened recently.
Last night.
Last night.
Pretty soon. Yeah, that's, you're kind of low, but we can handle.
Thank you, and I appreciate you saying something about that because, again, I do not like to uh resort to reading things on a community discussion group. Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Are there any other questions?
Thanks, Kevin.
Is there any other questions on the police report? Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
Uh, we can print some.
Oh, yeah, I can, I can print you some. Okay. Okay, so at this time, we're going to break into executive session to talk about a contract. And so if I could have everyone leave except for Mari.
He's in trouble, yes.
No, I've asked him to stay. Session for city council. And it is ABO six. Um, so that we're going to go to four point one. To, uh, we have been talking about Guadalupe Street, the lease of Guadalupe Street from Main Street down to the river's edge. And um, I will.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve with modification that the Guadalupe Street lease agreement will only incorporate into Mari's uh boundaries. Property boundaries.
So we have a motion. Does anyone want to second that?
Okay, that's fine.
No second? It does.
Good.
Okay, if we, what further uh discussion?
We didn't have a second, so.
I can make a motion to uh approve the Guadalupe Bay lease agreement. Uh, as long as it's, as long as it's consistent.
With the, with the, with the indemnification of the city.
Yeah.
Um, rules, identify the city for any and all damages.
Let me, let me ask it this way. Would you like Mari to be able to build as proposed, but you want me to make changes to the leasing agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Is that the motion?
That's the motion.
And to, and to make sure that the new owner
Yeah.
has to renegotiate.
Yes, that's within his, yeah, already has a policy.
And so then, then, then I, then I'll make suggested edits and then present back to the mayor and the mayor for final approval, and we'll bring that back to the council for final approval.
At the next, at the next meeting.
At the next meeting, and then I can also, I can also negotiate with um, uh, Mari's counsel to get that in final form.
Make the motion I seconded.
Okay. Is there any more discussion?
Um, okay, so if the attorney rewrites this and then we find that it's, say, is not what either councilman McClan feels comfortable with, then he could make a motion at that point to not accept the rewritten agreement.
Absolutely.
Could vote on that then.
Yes.
Okay.
You always have that option.
There, there is nothing that requires this city to approve or this council to approve a final lease agreement.
Okay, so is is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, uh, I'll take a roll call vote. Any question? And Matthew seconded Alaska. Pam, how do you vote?
No.
And Mike, how do you vote?
Well, I tried my first motion. I say no.
No.
No pressure.
I'm going to say yes. So the motion carries. Okay, so we're going to go on to four point two. Motion to select an appraiser for the GLO mitigation contract. I think that we have those on the overhead. I'm sorry to keep you all so late.
So do we have a recommendation?
Yeah, um, so I have Langford here on to speak a little bit on the submittals. Um, did you guys want to make any mentions on uh particular comments on the three submittals that we received?
So you received three submittals.
Um, Jessica, do you mind if you stand up here so the mic can catch it?
Oh, yeah, here's the microphone right here.
Yeah, we can get you on record.
Uh, so you received three submittals, Atrium Real Estate Services, LPA, and Sanogo. We did a small procurement for this since it was going to be under $50,000. It is a requirement of your grant to procure if you want to get it reimbursed with grant funds. I personally have worked with Atrium Real Estate Services before when I worked in Bastrop County. With them, the other two I have not, so I can only speak to Atrium. They, it depends on the parcel and the size, but they average anywhere from a thousand to fifteen hundred. I do know in Bastrop County, they did uh like an acre or more lots for beginning appraisal, and it was $1,100 for Bastrop County. Um, they had a good turnaround time. They did what they said they were going to do. I did not have any bad experiences with them, not to say that the others are not good. Sanogo, they quoted nineteen hundred appraisal. And then LPA, I heard back from them today, so I wasn't able to spend too much time, but they quoted around uh the lowest was five thousand parcel, which is a lot. So, I mean, if you have multiple, that adds up pretty quickly.
Yep.
Yeah.
So Atrium's, or the lease, lease per parcel average?
Yes, they did not give me a quote because it just varies on the size that they do, but my experience, it was not near nineteen hundred.
So they bought from the chief, that's previous, previous interaction was?
It was previous.
Yeah. Good.
Okay, so does anyone want to make a motion as to one of the three?
No, you're, you're, you're in the motion seat. Not leaving. That, you're in the, that's the seat that has to make all the motions.
Go for it, Nate.
Make a motion, I'm not even looking at it. Make a motion to uh accept Atrium as the appraiser uh for the GLO mitigation contract number two-two dash oh eight five dash oh four zero dash acquisition process?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion. Second, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Um, okay, we'll move on to the next item. Motion to accept or deny Martin Dale Park's maintenance request for proposals.
So city council recalls, I presented a draft request for proposals packet for review and approval. Uh, city council tabled the action and requested that receive additional review by the Parks Board. Their comments were provided, and this latest draft incorporates their comments and track changes, I believe.
Right, I'm going.
And the, so the question is, is, does this satisfy the desires of the city council in looking for a motion to approve to publish the request for proposals as additional?
Does it state in the proposal how many uh landscape maintenance people we want to seek to get bids from? Or we can just get as many as as we deem fit?
In terms of respondents?
Yeah.
So our purchasing policy would require us to at least try to obtain three bids. Hopefully, we'll be able to contact more of those three potential vendors. And we'll get as much competition as we can get. So you'll see if the timeline provides, the updated timeline provides significant um interested vendors to propose, uh, to develop a proposal and submit it.
That's all I have.
I make a motion to accept Martin Dale Park's maintenance request for proposals, RFP for publication.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, I ask for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. We need a motion to accept or deny ordinance 2023-921 regarding regulating recreational vehicles. And I'm going to ask Adrian to speak to this.
All right, hi, everyone. So over the past, what, six, eight months, we've been discussing RVs heavily about their land use. In our May workshop, we identified what a campground is, even though at the time there was not a definition of campground. And we established that definition as nuisance violation and appropriate zoning. So what we have here is an amendment or include a section to include in our flood hazard prevention ordinance. Establishing an RV is the regulatory floodway, the hundred year floodplain, and regulating RVs in the floodway and requiring permitting in the hundred year floodplain. The certificate for having a flood, a RV in the floodplain is so that the city is aware of where to. Where are our weaknesses during a in an emergency event to evacuate those vehicles? There's a semi strict process about information that we would require. Some of that, the language would include two emergency contacts within the 30 mile radius and that they agree to remove these RVs within a reasonable amount of time during a declared flood event. Failure to meet that threshold or that timeframe would result in city evacuating those RVs through our towing contract once it's approved. To be evacuated from the site to avoid any kind of collisions into nearby properties or even worse, any threats to life and safety. So if there's any questions on this ordinance I'd from the council, I'd more appreciate to hear them.
It also reflects planning zone workshops we've had in 2021. So these these conversations have been going for these last two years in this place. Those those conversations and desires. What those proposed amendments were to.
And it's also important to mention that there's been conversations about the habitation of RVs. It doesn't take qualify as a guest house. And making that distinction is fairly important, especially most of these RVs do have a front of kitchen and which for our standards may be determined as a secondary home. And according to our zoning ordinances, there could only be one primary dwelling. Having two kitchens on one lot essentially is a violation of zoning ordinance.
I had a question about 153.53, the recreational vehicle in the 100 year floodplain. So we are making exceptions for RVs in the floodplain, but we're not, of course, letting them be in the floodway. So but it says here that the quick disconnect, where does it say anything about an RV that is being habitated and how are they going to deal with their sewage?
That's in section 153.51.
153.
Remember that.
Five one. A, let's see, B. Oh, unlawful. But you're saying that they could have it though. First, you're saying they they cannot deposit sink, shower, or anything into the street or a lot. But then then why are we allowing them to have a temporary permit in the floodplain then to habitate to habitate in their RV in the flood?
So having the RV in the floodplain would basically be for storing and not for habitation. It does only address wastewater. It's I remember writing this. It doesn't really address water since it does have its own water supply for regulating the wastewater.
So a way to remedy this would be, say, if it was zoned R1 and a person had the ability to either remodel a home or build a home in the in the floodplain, then they could have the RV as an accessory structure.
No. If they're building a house, it's not the primary structure. It's not habitable. So they would use this as their. Basically, this RV would trump over that existing remodel or erection of the building. So you cannot, the objective of this ordinance is to prevent people using them as a secondary home or as a temporary home. If it if it violates the land use, basically, one of the only instances where an RV would be habitable is in a campground.
But if it was zoned R2, though, where manufactured homes or mobile homes are allowed in in R2?
Well, well, homes are separate. They're defined separately from a RV.
So no RVs are allowed in R2 zoning either, even if it's zoned for.
This 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 phrase requirement that no one can live in a recreational vehicle except in a campground. Our zoning regulations stipulate a campground is only permitted within commercial C1 district, subject to a specific use permit. So if someone's visiting, like we know a neighbor is, and there's they're in the RV and they're living there for a period of time, they're in violation based on this ordinance?
Not if they're staying over nine.
They're they're habiting that vehicle as a residence because unless they are cooking, flushing, creating wastewater and those things, they're not be able to. If someone's sleeping in their their vehicle but using the the house for for all their needs, I'm not sure that this would disqualify that.
We're not we're not addressing that. So that's why I want to clarify. We're not addressing that.
What about the the trailer that's down north west of the road on left there on the river? I think they use it as an Airbnb.
Oh, you're talking about as the yeah, the Airbnb, the the.
Yeah, where the big bulkport is?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That is a that is, yeah, I've got that on my hotel stuff.
Is that in the floodway?
Floodplain.
Floodplain.
And they're actually renting it out as a as an Airbnb.
Well, they can have it there with with if they go through the permitting process, they can have it there. The only issue is they won't be able to have any sewage or so makes it a little bit difficult. It may have some kind of system inside their vehicle or something. But we were trying to regulate the.
Yeah. Once if it sits there for six months and doesn't move, it's now a manufactured home.
That's if you recognize that guideline that FEMA puts out.
Uh, wait.
That's a.
That is.
So 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 nothing of the nothing in the definition of recreational vehicle would satisfy a manufactured home. Manufactured home is I is defined as something that's been approved under the 1976 HUD requirements. And so recreational vehicle doesn't meet those requirements, almost as far as I know.
Maybe there's someone else. It defaults to zoning purposes. So once the once it sits there for 180 days, it now gets considered. It gets reclassified. So.
I don't think so.
But the. The length of time requirement is separately defined in chapter 153 currently. And it says if it's stored in that area or more than a certain time, that it has to be road ready, essentially. And so, you know. Plate tires, up to date registration, those sort of things. That's that's where that time comes in.
That's the FEMA rules.
That's that's the.
And you can strengthen the FEMA rules. The FEMA rules are the basis.
Yeah.
That's that's what that's the subject of. So 153 or 153, 53 strengthens those FEMA rules. Creating a registration like regime so that the RVs can be accounted for during a flood hazard event.
Okay, so we're doing this independent of the presentation that Adrian did with regard to enforcing the primary use. Have we done any enforcement of the primary use as of yet?
We are working that with our code enforcement officer that provided a random defining conditions which constitute a campground. So that for the code enforcement, I believe it was two more of these constitutes campground. This this is further restricting habitation related but different.
You're trying to make it easier to enforce what that was that legally does, but this is more clear.
We're trying to codify. The habitation of recreational vehicles within this. Within R1. Oh, no, within the city state limit.
Within the city period. So we're saying that if you're if you are habitating a recreational vehicle as if you wouldn't do that, then you can only do that within the confines of campground. And the campground is further restricted. So you're telling these people that own the property down here on the river, they cannot day use their RV on the property?
No, no, they would they would simply have to follow the permitting, the registration regime that we have here. The applicant's name.
What if they're in the floodway?
The floodway, I believe, is restricted elsewhere in that chapter. I don't think it makes a distinction. I think it's it talks about flood hazard area. And then here, about 152 talks about the floodway. But but again.
So no floodway?
No floodway.
So everyone has a RV down there on the thing, basically saying.
I that's it's a pretty broad statement. There the the floodway meanders along the riverbank so people can have RVs. You know, the sort of town near our park system and not be a violation of this proposed 53 dot 52. There is that any of those properties have some boundary between the property line and with the floodway lines. Maybe not all. But would it be a would it be a prohibition on RVs on that part of town? It would be subject to.
There's still the other issue regarding this primary use, so that's a whole other.
So so if it's. If you're taking a RV, hooking it to sewer system, if we campground, campground is not allowed in a residential zoning, only do it in commercial zoning. So you wouldn't be able to connect your RV. But you want to place your RV down there, use it for the day. Off, dump it somewhere else. I I don't see a problem with that as long as it's not within the regulatory floodway. If you are going to put it in the 100 year floodplain, we're creating a registration regime to keep track.
But does it specify in the temporary permit for the RV in the floodplain, what form of use is being exerted by having that permit? It's not really specified. I mean, it does say temporary RV permit, but does it say, as he just mentioned, well, you can live in it for one weekend, or you could live in it and for consecutive weekends, or what what is the time constraints on the limitations of the temporary RV floodplain permit?
Expat.
What's the permit for?
It's 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 to keep track of. So RVs can be placed in the floodplain now.
They can be.
They can be. It's with the floodplain.
Yes.
Floodplain now.
But just they can't though unless they're zoned R1.
Okay, there's there's a distinction between placement and the types of use.
Yeah.
So if you're flushing toilets and goes down a hose, not into a tank on your your vehicle, it's going down a hose and into a pipe or onto the ground, we're saying you cannot inhabit the vehicle in that manner. You're not supposed to unless you're in a campground. If you're parking it and you're just going to use it to get out of the shade, maybe enjoy the air conditioning with the. Facilities that that RV provides. That's fine, as long as it's not the floodway. If you're in the floodplain, we're going to want you to register that vehicle so that we're that RV, so that we're we are aware of it for flood hazards. Basically, it just takes what is already existing where you can park your RV in the floodplain. But it helps the city keep tabs on it and, you know, making sure helps us enforce that road ready requirement.
Are we limiting limiting by this? Is there anything about limiting companies on their property?
So that's where the the other zoning. Interpretation of our zoning ordinance comes from the provisional code enforcement officer is that if we have two co-located RVs, that also would constitute a campground. Under the zoning ordinance, and then you're back into a restricted use except for in a current district with specific permits. So it's yeah, but ideally, all of this would be buttoned up into a single rewrite of our zoning codes. But the zoning codes have significant hurdles to get that done.
Yeah.
And we started a pretty lengthy rewrite process, ran to other priorities, and we pushed pushed it back. This helps us achieve some of the near term concerns we have regarding flood risks. And that's that's why we're doing doing these regulations within the flood hazard.
Just just bear with me here. So let's just say we're all right here. Carlton Park's an RV over there for a night. Is he going to have to come get a cert? I mean, it's in the floodplain right there.
Yeah.
So he's going to have to get a cert a certificate for the night?
Yeah. So so if you have an RV and.
You can't basically rent it out.
It's not you don't have to get a you don't have to get it like per use. If you're if you have an RV and you think you might bring it to Martindale, get it registered with the city.
Okay.
And you're good to go.
Because they have flood comes, we need to know who to contact.
We talked about this in the river committee for a long time, with push regime with very much. This was a.
That's fair.
This is like a two year old comment.
Yeah.
Not to put it in the floodway, especially especially the ones that are just left there. You know, they're parked units that have been there since I moved back to it years ago. So those are.
I mean, my neighbor has it.
It this could potentially impact people who live in the 100 year floodplain. Right? So if if you store your RV at your home location and your home location is in the 100 year floodplain, you're still going to register this. You're still want to so it's it's not just people who are using this for maybe recre purely recreation activities on, you know, unimproved land. It may impact people within the community who just park it in their driveway.
Yeah, it will. Yeah.
It will, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it will.
But I mean, again, I'm confused about 153.53 where we're asking for the permit. Is that just for storage or is that for weekend use?
And both.
Maybe the placement. Doesn't matter the use, the placement. And it could be an R1 or R2, or where are you allowing this to be within the floodplain? Where what zoning.
100 year.
Locations.
Well, standard shift for the purposes of so that we know if a flood comes, who to contact in the event of a flood. Say you went to Houston for the weekend, but you have an RV and you give Mike the right to move it for you.
This does not create any new restrictions about the placement of RVs within the city other than within the floodway.
But that's allowing it in the floodplain, say in R1 or R2 or.
Well, because because people are going to store them on on their own property, their their homes.
Me.
Yeah.
Look at the mayor as an example, right? So.
But she that's mostly just for storage. I mean, she doesn't sleep in it in the driveway.
But I would register it so that the city would know if I wasn't home, if I went on vacation and then a flood happens, who has who's going to move it for me?
Who has the key?
I'd have to name somebody. I'd I'd have to make arrangements with like my. I'd have to name somebody. I'd, I'd have to make arrangements with like Mike to move.
You're making people be responsible, is what I'm saying. You're saying I'm forcing you to make this decision. I'm forcing you to wear a mask. I'm forcing you to.
This is a council discussion.
I understand. I just wanted to make my point.
So it is to habitate on a temporary basis possibly in the, in the temporary permit? Or is that just for storage or?
So I, my, my interpretation of, of this regulation would be habitation includes a full use of the full facilities. Primarily of interest is the creation and disposal of wastewater, right? If you're, if you're using the kitchen to cook and creating waste and wastewater with the sink, you, you have to be doing that within the confines of the campground.
Confinings of what?
The campground.
Or you can just pump it out. I mean, you, if you don't have to dump it, you can just contain it and then, and then pump it.
Right. And at that point, you're not connect, you're not required.
But then what is this quick disconnect type utilities? What, what would be an example?
That's already part of our flood pain, flood damage prevention ordinance. And that would be on the person to propose what that would.
Like a backflow preventer on a waterfall, say?
I've never seen one because I don't have an RV, never ran across it, but it's, this is standard language that we're, that's in the, are the FEMA regulation. What we don't want to do is say, you know, RV owner who wants to put in a sewer system, you must use type 87 disconnect. No, most of the quick, quick connect disconnect, you propose it, we review it, say, yep, it is what it is. What, it is what it says it is.
A quick connect so you can remove it quickly from the side in case of a flood, basically.
Yeah. Okay, do I have a motion to accept or deny?
No.
I'll do it. I make a motion to accept, to accept ordinance 2023 dash 0921 regulating recreational vehicles.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
Okay. When, when will this take effect then?
Sixty days.
What is it?
Sixty days after October 1st. At the end.
Sixty days.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, the motion carries. Okay, um, let's go on to item number 4.5. We are talking about mending the utility rates and Jared's going to address it.
Yeah, so this, this is an option for the, for the city council to consider. So when we went through the budgetary workshops, in order to balance the utility fund, we discussed and proposed adjusting the rates. This ordinance would adjust those rates as we discussed in the workshop. The city council does not want to adjust these rates. You don't, you do not have to. It would create a deficit in our, in our budget. And then I would likely come back with you, with, with an alternative to assume that deficit likely with the general, by limiting the amount of payroll that's reimbursed to the general fund by utility fund or limiting the amount of overhead reimburse, expenses that are reimbursed by utility fund. Right now, in total, we transfer uh, let's see, forty thousand dollars in payroll and about fifty five thousand dollars in overhead, about ninety thousand dollars from the utility fund to the general fund to reimburse it or expenses.
Say that again, wait, we'll back up, say that again, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so all payroll, all utility clerk payroll is about thirty eight thousand dollars. All overhead reimbursement from the utility that pays for telephone, printing costs, all those things is about fifty five thousand, let's make it math easy, round it, and call it ninety five thousand. So if the city council chose not to adopt this service rate change, the effect would likely be that those reimbursements would decrease by about between twenty and twenty four thousand dollars. So go from about ninety or ninety five thousand dollars to about seventy thousand dollars. The impact would be there's now a twenty thousand dollar hole in our general fund that we have to then, you know, month a fifth.
Real quick, Jared, so right now, you say over two thousand gallons. What is it? Is it still three, is it still 350 for one thousand gallons?
What we're doing, the proposed rate changes would be to change the residential rate for the first two thousand gallons for flat rate by three dollars. The, the, the cost per thousand gallons after that point does not change. So that rates not changing, it's just the base rate changing by three dollars for residential. The base rate is changing by ten dollars a month for commercial in the wastewater.
Are we still, we still taking winter rates like December, January, February?
Yeah. Everything else of the rate setting would remain the same for customers with the one exception is we are looking to reclassify the apartments building from residential to a commercial rate structure. So that has a significant impact on them. And then the other, they're, they're on a residential fee. And so they're, they're paying the twenty five dollars per, per unit.
With no overage.
With no water overage. Uh, they, no, 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 they, they get the same multiplier of three dollars fifty cents per. We would look at, it's lower than, we're just changing that base to. And then the service charges for solid waste, they would change a base monthly fee for commercial and dollars to twelve and a base fee from eight dollars to ten for residential. All total, that generates about twenty three thousand dollars-ish revenue in the course of a year for the city. And would have the effect for residential customers to see about a five dollar increase on their monthly for residential.
And how, how much will we generate with that, by those two base?
Twenty three thousand change. And that's, and that's, without that, that's becomes a hole that we have to plug in the, in the general fund, in the other budget carrying maneuvers to cover. The utility fund operates as a, basically as a business where when it goes through, on the enterprise. So we're trying to make sure that we don't run deficits within that budget. Which we have done for the last two years.
Pretty good surplus this year's estimated.
Yeah, on our general fund, for sure. So like if we did this twenty four thousand cut on this year, probably wouldn't notice it, but is that going to be the same next year?
Sure. But are we gonna keep increasing the rates?
Everything else increases.
The big thing for me, it's really hard. I mean, I know it doesn't sound like a lot and it would be a hole for us, but I mean, I know as a citizen, our water just got increased significantly.
Twenty five dollars.
Significantly. And it's just like, man, maybe this isn't the right year to do that whenever they just increased. So maybe it's, maybe it's that we need to eat until we can spread this, spread that out a little bit, because it kind of, that's a hit for a lot of people. I mean, it's not, it's not easy, but that's my thoughts at least.
Effectively, this is a bottom problem. Yeah, it.
Effectively.
For what?
Huge, but it still is something that we're not, I mean, we have to consider the population, so.
You say here that the rates for the sewer fees are based on water usage for December, January, and February. When was the last time that the city received water usage rates of those three months from Markendale Water Supply to average out the approximation of the charges?
We see those about each March each year.
Cause when I asked them about it, they, they thought that the city had only, only got information up to 2019 and that they haven't received.
Oh, no, it's since then, trust me. It's since then.
We, we adjust it every year.
So then these are from December, January of 2022, then that you're racing, basing the increase in the rates of the sewer use based on the month, you, the three month usage for 2022.
So if you use a lot of water in the winter, you're going to see this. This is another thing, come back to the report I had earlier about combining our organizations. We could get more debt, we could get real time data pricing. And so we'd be able to reflect actually uses and setups.
I, I mean, is there a way that we could put a window on this that we're, you know, let's, let's, let's get through the holidays and then let's increase?
I mean, you can, you'll create some deficits.
Yeah, but that is large.
But that is large.
Yeah. I don't know, that might be something for the council to think about.
And we could always cover it with senior performing.
Wouldn't that aren't.
It's gonna run out.
You sure?
And I tell you.
I don't want it, I want the interest.
Has there been much of a, many citizens that in the past have said that don't have the financial ability to accommodate bills and so then they've been hardships? Have, have there been as many hardship discussions this, this past year?
If anything, we've actually gone down in numbers. This, this month, we had zero disconnections.
Oh, good.
About every month, we, we've seen a decline in late fees. A lot of it's the automation, about half our customer base is on a completely automated base, so. Some people generally just forget.
And if we don't pass this, we can't buy other items that are badly needed, like computers. For the police department.
Yeah, the, the, the overage in the budget is pretty out. It, it, it needs to be, we need it because there's expenses affiliated with it.
We do have funds elsewhere too that use for that.
Yeah, it likely be coming out of the IT budget. There's some software purchasing that would be put on hold. Like the.
How about the emergency funds that we have?
I would not.
That's for emergency funds. You're supposed to have like four, four months at least operating expenses.
We have, we have an emergency fund that, that we use for disaster. And then we have, and then we also maintain a operational cash on hand, separate from our emergency fund.
How many, how much in our emergency fund do we have?
Uh, that's, that's, over two hundred thousand dollars in the one account. Nearly three hundred thousand in the other, so combined they were about five hundred thousand.
What's our monthly allocations? Or like what mayor just said, was that four months in the pocket?
Uh, so in the general fund, that's about forty to fifty thousand dollars a month.
But we got like almost a year worth of them.
Yeah, but we don't want to use it for.
But if you include the utility fund, it's about seven. So we consider seven times fours, twenty eight, two hundred eighty thousand dollars is probably where we want to be. We're about three hundred thousand. We're about, we're like.
In the emergency fund.
In our, on our cash on.
Cash on hand, but then we have an emergency fund.
Which is, which we, which is, our goal is to get to 250. It's two thirteen or two thirty three, something like that. And that's due for disaster. It's intended for disaster.
Well, and you saw what happened recently with over twenty thousand dollars for our sewer system. And that was unexpected.
And see, that's, that's.
Yes, it was.
Not really, but that's, don't get me started. Really, you really want to, you want to.
MacGyver, don't go there.
Own risk with plan mitigation.
Anyway, you get what I'm saying. We don't build there. Keep breath, keep breath, keep breath. Yeah, anyway, we're off topic. Let's keep rolling.
Okay, do I have a motion to, to, what is this ordinance? To raise the mill, the utility rates? Ordinance 2023. No side talking. So do I have a motion for ordinance 2023 dash oh nine dash twenty one dash oh one?
I, I mean, I want to make a motion to accept the ordinance 2023 oh nine twenty one oh one, revising chapter fifty point zero nine and fifty one point zero three. And then is the utility rates with the modification that we start this increase at the beginning of the year.
For the calendar.
January one, January one count down to here.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the motion. Okay, we'll move on to the next item of business. Motion to accept or deny ordinance 2023 dash oh nine dash twenty one dash oh two on the creation of the special revenue fund restricted park fund. And this is the ordinance that's on the overhead.
Yeah, so this, this follows up after the budgetary amendment to create to shift the park revenue into restricted account. This ordinance creates that restricted account and the, the uses.
Sam, do you want to make a motion?
Um, well, I, I know that Adrian had been working on that, on this ordinance. And I think that not only did he include the monies received from the park mobile app, but from, say, events that are in the park that generate income, say a special permit for a bouncy house or a party in the park. Where, where are the monies in the revenue? Can I, yes, let's, look, look at that.
I can honestly tell you, we have no requests for that.
Well, in the future, we might.
How much is it?
I forget what they said.
I think it was fifty dollars.
What's the ordinance again, the number this one?
It's 2023 oh nine twenty one oh two.
I'll bring it up here.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Make, make a motion to accept ordinance 2023 dash zero nine dash twenty one dash oh two. Creation of the special revenue fund restricted park fund.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any more discussion?
And, and where, where does it say that the money carries over from one year to to the next? Not only is it restricted, but does it carry over? Or does restricted? Or does restricted mean that?
Yes, restricted means that money's. Any balance at the end of the year. That 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 stays restricted.
I wanna make sure. You don't have to spend it that year, okay? Be happy, Quentin. Oh, are you happy?
It's like the wholesale tax revenues.
Not the entire park's budget, that's just this.
Right, right, it's just, it's just this.
You gotta be happy.
I'm happy, okay, yes.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, here and then the motion carries. Okay, we'll move on four point seven. Uh, motion to assign engineering services to uh, pursue general land office regional mitigation program. Um, and this is for the mod grant, oh, I'm sorry, is this what you were waiting for? Sorry. Okay, um, Jared, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, so um.
I should have taken that one out of turn.
The, the city has a opportunity to leverage a modification to the DLO grant. Where we can do something in more than was planned for our current Northwest River Road. Or pursue other projects within the confines of hazard mitigation. And so. We are proposing to enter into a task order agreement with Freeland and Turk uh, to design one of those. Projects, there are several projects we get to choose from. The requirement on the city is to submit our modification, contract modification project, no later than December first. Will be. Engineer has proposed he could come up with several conceptual scopes of work regarding the quail run extension. A other projects along Northwest River Road, Fannin Street, Cockett Street, Cattle Street. Uh, look at doing evacuation center. If, if the city council has a desire to pursue just one of these options. We can always have a lot of cost and tell our engineer, focus on this. He provided a task order with a not to exceed limit. Based off evaluating all these project candidates, coming up with some conceptual scopes of work, cost estimates. We're gonna pay for each one, so if there's something on here that is what we definitely want. I guess we have two issues, one is, do we want to pursue a mod? The answer is yes, because it's two million dollars of free money. Um, second question is, we want Freeland and Turk to do the work on it, I think yes, because they're already doing our presentation. And then, what, do we wanna look at all these projects, just a specific one? I think there's one missing on this chart that um, we also considered, which is the little bridge causeway. Past, is it Indian Court and.
River Bend.
And before we get to the entrance of River Bend. Um, there's that little.
That's on the.
Bridge.
Isn't that the, the color replacement?
Oh, yeah, he had it, okay, good. Um, yeah, so that's, that's one that could, it's expensive, could really benefit from this. Um, all of these are expensive options, we can really benefit. We looked at the evacuation center um, concept. We, that's gonna cost several thousand dollars for us to look into. And it may not be very big. Even once it's designed and we might not wanna go forward with it anyways, and so. Great idea, I just don't know if it's gonna be.
What would the other ones cost upfront?
The, to look at all of them, I think was it not to exceed eleven thousand dollars, something like that? So um, I know most of the work on the River Bend causeway. Uh, has been done already, we've already paid for it, so it wouldn't take a whole, that wouldn't cost a whole lot more. Um. The other projects individually, probably just onesies and twosies, you three thousand at the most. Um, to come up with, maybe something like Northwest River Road, maybe four thousand range, but the. We could, we could go with the contract as it is now. And have a look at all of them, if the city council wants to do that, we just, we don't have a lot of time.
How about we take the evacuation center out, take that one out? I think that's, that's, that's all.
Can, can I just, okay, so we, we have the developer here, you know, doing that corner coil, the coil run.
Yeah.
And they're doing the culvert, but they're only improving it. Are they gonna, it mean, does that need to be improved beyond what they're gonna do, or are we just gonna leave that alone? Because that's technically not on that now.
If we did quail run, we'd like to do something better than what they're proposing.
Because, you know, they kind of work like, we'll pay you for what we were gonna spend and you can do the rest, do the, what you really. Because, you know, my answer, my argument to that was, they're going to develop that commercial and you're gonna go back again and have to do it again. And the guy's like, not my problem, that's their problem, I'm like, really? You're, it's owned by the same company, you just really.
Ideally, we would have had a development agreement with and had an entire area cover on development agreement. Rather than just for subdivision regulations, but.
So we just leave that and wait till they develop that commercial and then they're gonna have to fix that anyway.
I don't know, because it's for different.
Well, they're not gonna fix quail run and that.
I'm not gonna buy the culvert. Going under the road.
Yeah, I mean, this. The next engineer would have to look at the impacts, existing infrastructure and make improvements when needed.
I mean, we're getting some, they're supposed to do something there.
Yeah, and the next. I wouldn't expect, I mean, maybe it blows up when we get commercial real quick, but commercials likely gonna be one of the last things to go.
Would, would, would council.
Would council agree to take the evacuation center out of that package, I, I think.
Yeah, I mean.
Think, just take.
It's a motion.
What do you think, Judy, is that your opinion, I mean?
I'm sorry.
Take the evacuation center out for, for.
For sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's.
We've had discussions about for uh, this. I'm working on evacuation center right now in Caldwell County. Um, there's of course bigger, but just the cost alone.
Millions.
They're already over budget, they have about fourteen million dollars.
Oh. Do they, is that a dual use, can that center be used for other things?
It's gonna be uh, their shelter, it's built specifically for shelter, but it's gonna be like.
So something like, what we'll be able to afford is maybe three thousand square feet. Which gets you something, but not a heck of a lot. When, especially when you have to consider you're providing restroom facilities, kitchen facilities, sleeping.
Showers.
Showers and all that, so we also. The amount of space that can be used for evacuees starts going to like maybe twenty. And that's in a thirty, forty, if you're lucky, in an open hall and a regular cot. So um, it's, it's.
Yeah, take that out, yeah.
The most.
We need roads to that evacuation center.
Hey, well, y'all agree taking that out? And your opinion too, it's long, I mean, that's, it's a lot of money.
It is long, I don't see that your allocation going that far.
Okay, I'd say we take it out, y'all agree?
I mean, I think it's hard for us to make the decision on this, just because all the roads are horrible.
I know.
And.
Lay, lay those in there.
It's hard, it's really hard to understand which one needs more work, because. I mean, I can probably take an example per situation there, that, yeah, that looks like it needs some work, I mean.
Yeah.
Could we, so, so, yeah, we can leave the rest of it in here and they provide analysis, cost estimates for each one, what, what the scope of work.
I think that's probably gonna be our best bet for.
Then we could do, then we could do a priority list, like.
Yeah, so they come back and probably uh, some amount of time and and give you. Uh, any of options, and you choose an option and that's what we submit it for.
I mean, I wish we could make a cute decision here, but I don't think that's possible.
Yeah, we need to find, you know, find what we can afford based upon each of the.
The number in there is wrong, it says nineteen seventy-six, it should be nineteen seventy-nine.
Thanks, Larry.
Could, could we look at the engineering fees that that were there, I think it was nine thousand or twenty thousand?
Not to exceed twenty thousand?
Road or what?
Yeah, so, so these, these are, we pay them according to their laborly hourly rates. Uh, and then it would just not exceed these amounts. The uh, twenty thousand, a lot of that would incl- is inclusive of nine thousand dollars, I would look at the evacuation center itself. There's additional costs within the evacuation center. So if we're looking at just these other ones, I don't have a firm quote of what that would be. I would just expect it to be somewhere in the course of around eight thousand dollars.
This all is gonna be paid back by the grant?
Uh, no.
So we have to pay that upfront?
Yeah.
We have to pay that upfront. Whoa, man. I mean.
But then do this for two million dollar investment.
I gotta know my, I gotta know the odds, what's it, I mean, but. I mean, we spent, I mean, we don't even know about that sidewalk deal.
We're going, we're going to get this.
I'll mortgage my house for eight thousand dollars.
That's not.
What about the sidewalk?
Well, that's another.
What about the side? What about the sidewalk?
That's something different.
What about the sidewalk, I'll say it again.
Odds should be guaranteed.
Yeah.
Only offered, have the existing grant. I mean, it's without question, it's just we need to know our options.
Yeah.
And then the amount of the percentage that the Langford charges for helping us with these grants, is that specific, I mean?
That's gonna be separately from this activity.
So how much is it gonna cost us to get to apply for all those, that road improvement? How much money we gotta put upfront as a city?
It's gonna be eight thousand dollars right now, and then the rest from there comes out of the grant.
Eight or nine thou- what's the nine thousand?
The nine thousand was for an architect to design the evacuation center.
Took that off.
I thought it was eleven thousand.
And so you take the nine thousand out of twenty, there's eleven thousand left. I would suspect that about two thousand or so was of engineers separate from the architect was built in.
So I, I guess my question, what are the odds, is it a fifty fifty, sixty, forty?
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine what?
We've already got the money, we just have to figure out how to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I'll clarify this, it's ninety-nine, I'll go for it. If it's ninety-nine percent, I'll go for that odds.
Yeah, so the city of Martindale did receive the allocation from the general land office for method distribution. Uh, it is guaranteed money, we just need to submit an eligible application for it.
Okay.
Of Brandon DLO, you got your allocation, two million three hundred seventy-five thousand. With taking engineering and then admin environmental, pending if there's no acquisition, you have about one point nine for construction. Uh, it is due by December first, the application has to.
I'll go for that deal, you got me in command.
I would, I would keep in mind too, with whatever project you pick, the cost estimate now, we're telling everybody just add on at least thirty-five. It's gonna be just like this one, probably two years before even.
Well, like Nick said, it's, it's all about the roads, that's our biggest issue here is roads, you know?
So I'll begin type the hazard review.
Is, is there a timeframe in which the city has to allocate or use all those funds? A limit of time?
Once you get a contract, you'll probably be at number. Four-year contract, like your current one, without an extension, maybe a box.
Because we're just, even with this Northwest Road, I mean, we've, we've gone through plans, it's costing more. They reduced the scope of work and even with the discussions tonight, it would appear that the scope of work is possibly gonna change too. So those are added e- expenses, so. I mean, that's the only thing that that frustrates me, is how the costs are going up and the, the project scopes are going down and down. And, and we've learned something tonight from how to more effectively inform the public or how perhaps we haven't. And, and, and so, but I, I feel assured with, with your experience that you can alleviate perhaps some of those problems.
And Martindale is the only one experiencing that, the cost inflation over the past two years, materials, it's just skyrocketed. Almost all these current bits that you're working on are all getting cut in half. It, so that's why we're saying, whatever we apply for now, we need to make sure you can add at least a thirty percent DC on top of that dollar amount. So that way in two years, when we're doing this again, because it'll take GLO to get you a contract free, you won't get one for a year. And then you gotta do a whole new environmental, we gotta do the design again, just like this project we have currently. So you're looking at the same scenario, just because that's the way the general land office works, and they do not allow any more money after that. So that's why we're just keeping in mind that whatever we pick, whatever Thomas and Turk come up with as a cost estimate, it's gonna cost way more than that.
What, I mean, we have an engineer that we've been using, Steve Ramsey, that currently retired, I mean, are we? Are we responsible for having Turk as our main geyser or drawing up these plans? Or, or could the city eventually reach out and have our own? We likely don't have time.
This is, this is, this is for the grant.
Oh, okay.
This is for the grant.
For the application, you, the engineer just needs to provide us with a map and a budget.
Yeah.
I do everything else.
Okay.
To get the application in, and then the grant will pay for all the engineering.
Got you. Okay, I'll make a motion. You convinced of Jared, I make a motion to assign engineering service, services to pursue the general land office regional mitigation program. Council of Governments method of distribution, COG M O D S grant.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second? Okay, motion is second. Is there any more discussion?
No.
Okay, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries. And I do apologize for keeping y'all so.
We could have put you guys upfront, we didn't know, sorry about that. Thanks, thanks for hanging in there. Get us some, get us some money, man, get us some money. Take care.
In my mind, I got it confused with this next item, and so we're gonna move on, this is discussion only. Um, on appointment procedures on, on a new city engineer.
Right, so as, as I mentioned, we had our prior city engineer, appointed city engineer. Um, retired. And so the city needs to um, appoint and, or nominate and select a, a new city engineer, of course, with our chapter thirty-one ordinances. We could do it many, many ways, we can appoint um, Freeland and Turk. As our city engineer, continue on with them. Um, we could leverage our Bureau of Better Costs contract um, for plans reviews. And then we could also uh, go out with a new request for proposal process. And then request for proposals are somewhat different when you're selecting professional services like engineering. It requires you to go out and request statement of qualifications. And the qualifications are reviewed, then once you, once the city identifies the highest qualified. Then you begin price negotiations with the highest qualified, and if you can't come to terms for whatever reason. Um, then you go down the next, to the list, to the next best qualified. What it basically sets up is that you cannot give, you're not in a position when you do professional services like engineering to do lowest price, technically acceptable type, type of contracting. You're going with best qualified contracting.
Best qualified, I mean, if they're all licensed and they have a resume.
Freeland and Turk, when we initially hired them, we, we received seventeen proposals. Freeland and Turk was, was the highest qualified. Um, out of seventeen, those included firms that the county uses like Dusset. And, and other firms the city had used in the past, like Harold and Lee. And um, a significant number of, of regional uh, civil engineers.
How long ago was that?
Uh, it was in twenty twenty-one.
I still have an issue with the highest qualified, I mean, if you, it's like we had to be for you.
That's, that's a state statute.
I mean, we have to go with the highest, I mean, if they're all licensed and they're qualified, the resumes are good, I mean, I don't.
Who reviewed, man? It's, it's, it's.
I could, I'd rather leave it.
Who decides who's highest?
So the, the way it worked previously is, well, the, the city council does ultimately. But the way it worked previously is that each of the city council members were, went out, ranked all the proposals, they were given a worksheet. They scored them, we got scoring from, I think, just about each and every one. Um, and then. Look at the averages, they, they came on top, um, pretty significantly, so. Um. There were, there were three that were somewhat close. The rest weren't that close. Um.
You remember why, you remember why they were significantly?
Yeah, so, so one of the, some of the key discriminators why these, why they were above is because they proposed. They worked on projects similar to what the city needed in utility systems, wastewater, roads, they had. They had experience working with a number of cities with them, East County, Carmel County.
Smaller cities.
Smaller cities. They had teaming relationships with landscape architect firms that they proposed in their proposal. Which we saw as a benefit when we looked at parts improvements. And had already identified engine, electrical engineers, they had all basically the subspecialties accounted for. For contracting, it's part of the teaming relationship, so it was, it was about a good of, uh, city qualifications. And then recently, uh, the city of Euland went through this process. And selected best qualified, and Freeland and Turk won one of that, just in the last two.
I still, I still like to interview, I like to go through the process like the police chief, like you.
That's not the process that we follow, the, the, the state.
I, I just think they're. All, I mean, if you, I, I still, I still don't comprehend that, because if you have an engineering firm. And they're licensed and certified, and they have a resume of projects.
So, so we could do that, we could do, we could hire an engineer as an employee. And you could do that.
Okay, now maybe that, maybe that's something we need to consider, cause I, you know, and I, give you wrong.
Part-time engineer as an employee, and then you could hire that engineer on that basis of.
Just like we did with Ramsey. Same thing with Ramsey, correct? And it, and it has worked very well for the city. I think Ramsey's been doing an excellent job.
I don't know the procedure of how Ramsey was hired, cause he's, he was never an employee, he was a contractor.
But the problem, I'm, I'm, I'm not slamming Turk, I mean, Turk.
So you don't have to have a city engineer, you can just hire them per John.
No, so, so you have to have a city engineer by state statute, it's, it's a required position, like it is an attorney or a judge. Or a mayor, you have to have it.
But we don't know how Ramsey was hired in the first place.
He'd been here for thirteen years.
All I know, he's done a great job.
He did.
So he was a city engineer?
Yeah, he was a city engineer, and you know.
Contracted, what, what. A potential loophole, if you will, is by not contracting with an engineering firm. And hiring somebody with a professional engineering license as an employee. We wouldn't be hiring Freeland and Turk. We wouldn't be hiring, it would be somebody who you hire as an employee. Not subject to a contract with a company, they're, they'd be a W-two.
They'd be part-time?
Ten ninety-nine.
They'd be part-time, could they be part-time?
Yeah, like, like, think about it. The problem, there's a significant problem doing that is. You're gonna have to convince somebody to cut off of their company.
Well, if you gotta retire.
To become now an employee of the city instead of a contractor.
You could find a retired guy like Ramsey.
Also, you would have to.
Cause I mean, let me, let me, let me clarify, for, for, for grants and stuff, I think Ramsey's the way to go. But for as a city, I think what we've had in the past, I'd really like Ramsey, it's hands-on, because Turk is, he's got his people working underneath him. I think we'd get better, I think we'd give you more personal service if we had a part-time engineer.
I think we'd get plenty of personal service.
I think, well, I, I think he's kinda high, personally, I think Turk is kinda high.
But pricing?
Pricing, I mean, I'm, I'm going back with, it's still a pet peeve of mine, they charged us for that sidewalk. Upfront, eight grand, and we still hadn't got it, I mean, that to me is an issue for me. I'll just say, I'll say, I'll say it clear. I mean, I, 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 I have a problem with that, personally.
I share that responsibility, as I said at that time.
And I have another problem with it, I won't go into it. About the overlay, I won't get into that problem, I have a problem with that too.
It was just a professional recommendation.
Okay, I, 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 that's me, that's mine.
No, but I, I need to know kind of what the council is, so I know what to do.
It sounds like to me that we already went through the interview process. And it sounds like to me that you guys have had a good relationship with Turk, and for the most part, yeah, we.
I, I've had issues with him, I'll be honest with you, I've had issues with him, I'll stand, I'll stand, I'll stand, I'll stand.
Sounds like, that sounds to me like we don't need to really waste any time on this, it really makes sense that we've already gone through the process, so. That's how I feel.
If we were gonna contract, it'd be more time-saving, efficient in that way, to select that. It's, it's the ea- it's the easiest path forward.
Is it the most, is it the most cost-effective way forward?
With a contract or with Turk, I, I would have to do some significant research on even our ability to hire a part-time. Because once you hire a part-time, you're guaranteeing them work. And hourly salary for an engineer is gonna be a lot higher than mine.
Okay, so what happens once you say you did name Turk as the city engineer? Then what happens? Do we pay him a monthly salary?
No, we pay every job. We, we, based on task force. If you want, if you wanted to, you could for the next year, you could set an agenda item, and you could appoint. Freeland and Turk, and then acquire the council to vote up or down.
And then you can also hire another engineer. You wouldn't have to use them for every.
Can you say that again?
If the mayor wanted to, she has the authority under the local government code and code ordinances to make an appointment at any point in time. When a vacancy.
But it has to be valid.
It, it is, it is an appointment subject to the confirmation by the city council.
Just like the police.
That's right.
So if we hire, or if we did appoint Freeland and Turk, we could still hire other engineers.
So on a selective basis, say have, have an engineer do one thing, or have Turk do something else?
Just like we're doing right now. Yeah, Steve Ramsey is our city engineer, but we've been using Freeland and Turk for. So Ramsey's been our subdivision governor, like he oversees the subdivisions. So if we. We just haven't used Freeland and Turk for subdivisions, and we may not. So what I was getting at is, we would maybe use Bureau Veritas to do the subdivision reviews.
Is, is there some?
And they may be cheaper.
Is there something, Nick?
We don't know that.
Is there something, Nick, that you did, did not like about Bureau Veritas? You seem to.
It's just bureaucratic.
Well, they weren't following our ordinance.
A hundred percent, yeah, it's just, I mean, it's just.
We got it done though.
I think, I'm not complaining about that, I'm really thankful for that, that you guys done, and also, the, it's just, they're not local. Right, they're just not, they're up there, and they're just following paper, and they're. I get, I mean, they're following the rules, but it's also they don't understand where we're at, and this, that, and this, that. Right, I mean, for, let's go ahead and like, let's call it how it is, they weren't even. At one point, they weren't even looking at our ordinances, cause they, they made a mistake, remember?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, and it's like.
We caught that pretty fast.
Yeah, but still, it's just, it's there, this is how it is. A third party.
Consider my recommendation, my recommendation to do Freeland and Turk, they, they. Gary, he was, he was put on a spot covering for his partner. He typically does a subdivision type work that. A, a prior.
Steve Ramsey.
So that's, that's where he has a lot of expertise, he's done it for Romfels and everywhere else. He's, he's advised us on issues when we get into development agreements. I think he's been really good on, on identifying things, he's, he build a propose. Help us with rate setting and, and some of those other administrative stuff. They have a relationship with the city, they know the city, I, I think it would be a natural growth to, to get you to use them in that capacity. But. It's a city council's decision, so.
Well, this is discussion only, so we can't make a vote.
I'm gonna wait, I'm just asking his opinion, what do you think?
Well, Turk to me is not very friendly. To the public at all, and he's kind of flipping, it's my only.
It's my point.
Yeah, I mean, this whole project of, when I spoke to him, it was kinda like, boy, there's meetings. Like, I went to a meeting, and you never told us there was twenty feet of land you're taking. You just give us the thing, actually, the presentation that was done in January does not even show my tree. That I'm pissing and moaning about on his plans, just to give you an idea, but I'm like, I had to go and call him. No, he's very friendly, he comes to the house and, you know, probably built the city for, you know, three or four hundred dollars to do that, but.
And travel time.
Travel time.
Mileage.
But, um, but he, you know.
Two hundred dollars an hour.
I just don't think he, the only thing I have against him is he does not. He doesn't get that part of, hey, you gotta, you gotta spit it and explain it to, and be proactive about.
And for example, he was not here tonight.
Well.
Which is unacceptable, that's, well, wait a minute, you got, we got a hostile group out here, and he's not here to push his project? Give me a break, black mark.
And, and their defense, and I was, I knew that there would be pushback, I thought it was gonna be. On the, on the lines, we're drawn, I had never, I knew people had mentioned trees, I didn't think. I didn't think trees were gonna be a.
That's why Turk, it's Turk's baby, he needs to be here, take the heat, dude.
Mike, if I might just say, we, the original plan was to have this meeting last week. There's still, and we had.
I have, I have issues.
He would have been.
Tell you right up, he's had issues with it.
Now, do we, do we trust him to talk to other engineers, like the guy who was here the other night? I mean, he, he might.
His knowledge.
Oh, he could tussle with.
And we afford it.
No question.
Yeah, we just rate change.
I mean. I'm still, I got, I, I, I don't have a problem with anybody.
These rates, these are his rates, we just gotta live.
Steve Ramsey has discounted us so much.
You see are, um, rates that are sub. That he's charging now, I believe in the contract, or it's proposed rates for, for modification. Fully sure why he sent this to us.
Any comparison, Mr. Ramsey, is this in line with that?
Well, Ramsey was, was, charged us a flat fixed fee for every family in the town, charge us. So he, he, he made it administratively easy on the city to say, collect a thousand dollar deposit, and then I'll bill you for a thousand dollars, and all is good.
So what would Turk charge?
Even when it was more.
Turk, Turk would, again.
It'd be, it'd be, it'd be two thousand dollars, you know?
I mean, I'm telling you.
You know, who, who knows, but it's.
That's the problem, that's the problem with Turk, you don't, it's a surprise, you know?
Well, it, it's not paid by the city. It's a pass through, it would be paid on deposits.
Well, it depends on what you're hiring for.
Yeah.
If it, if.
It's like you're, you're dealing with a.
Division, then it would be a pass through, but if it's for something more, to not.
If, if, if this is an issue of rates, we can negotiate rates.
Alright, well, with.
But I, I, I can, I can try to pull some.
You don't have anyone else that you, that you even have to, to, to put in the bond with, to compete at this point?
Well, the thing is, I, I can't get rates through a competitive process, because it's based on a statement of qualifications, and I've set. A standard by the state, and I can't deviate from that, what I could do is, there's other ways to get rates. The federal government, for example, publishes rates for, for state region, that I can, I can pull that information. It's not gonna be one for one, I'll tell you that. These rates are probably right on target, they're, I don't think they're, I don't think we're getting a cut deal, I don't think we're getting fleeced.
We got fleeced for that sidewalk.
I don't think so.
Oh, if, if we don't get it, we got fleeced.
Well, and we.
That was a black mark.
It's a black mark on me.
No, 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 on him. I, I have a pro, cause all, all the money we're paying him, we need him for the grant, I grant it. But if what we, the money we've been giving that man, and he charges that kind of money for that sidewalk, that's a black mark for me.
I think there was not enough discussion about that, or at least the city wasn't advised. Initially, how much Turk was saying it was gonna cost for him to draw up those drawings and, and do all that now. If you say you failed us in a certain extent by not doing a certain step, and then. So I, why do you feel you have onerism on, on this then?
I'll, I'll use a, a little, I was assuming that we were operating under a course of dealings with, with him. And the course of dealing under the contract is that when he does proposals for grants up to that point, the grant was gonna fund it. He was doing it at cost and events, I didn't confirm that.
He should've told you.
You should've told me.
Yes, that's my point.
You should've told me.
That's my point.
I, I should've also confirmed with him on what, on what terms are we doing this work on.
See, again, again.
But then after that, he still charged us two thousand dollars more, and so he slid through a second time on the sidewalk.
Cause, well, those things happen in so close succession that it, it was bang, bang, by the time we caught it.
Got two thousand dollars more, you know, and we're, and we're trying to get our rates raised up, so we can cover our sewer plant. And we're paying this guy two thousand dollars more, I mean, it, it's a, it, if it's for, if it's for grants, I've got no problem. I have no problem with grants, but.
We just need to know what.
Three to us.
Yeah, I need to be upfront, there are maybe.
Problem is, not every grant is gonna be on, done on a contention basis.
There's disvaluations that we're doing.
Some of the grants that, that get done.
Yeah, but.
The, the terms of the grant will tell you, will dictate whether the people submitting it can do it on a contingency or not. So it's, it's not always up to the city on whether it's free.
Well, I have a history with him, and I'll, I'll go back to that overlay, I still have a history, that was deceitful, and I'll say it on record. Well, I, I, to charge, to charge us, to charge us twenty, to charge us twenty-eight thousand dollars for four hundred feet of road.
Under that design criteria?
Yeah, but, and for him, and I won't get it, I, that's, I'm gonna say, I've done it.
He was the, same with the market was.
Well, I got back, I got, you know, I, I, I will just say, I'll let it go, I'm done.
This discussion kind of points towards maybe going out and look for another.
We, we can do that.
Okay, leave it at that.
How soon do we have to appoint a city engineer?
Practically speaking, if we get another subdivision application, we're going to have to leverage. Probably either Freeland and Turk or Veritas, because we have no one else to do the work, unless we want to approve it by default.
Right, and we don't wanna do that.
Just clarify, Bureau Veritas, now that I, I really don't care, but they, they are just a filter to find. And they go find an engineer that's local.
No, they do, so Bureau Veritas has re- employees who are given regional responsibilities. And they perform those in their, their region. Some of, like, I think Martinville's in a region that goes from Waco to the border.
Right.
So, are we getting, are we getting the guy from Seguin? Or are we getting the guy from Waco driving down to, to Davis?
I know, like, the engineer that, 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 he's, that's, he only, he doesn't work solely for Bureau Veritas. He has multiples.
Possibly, po- possibly, they might, they might, they might be contracted. They might be so contracted.
That's all, that's what they do, it's a region, they subcontract engineers that, you know, they've gone through the hiring process that they're qualified for, so. That's what, that's why I was like.
So that's, that's the thing, when you're using a company like that, you're not gonna get consistency. Okay, that's, I think we've done enough of this. That's why, they might, they might be good little stock gap, but I wouldn't want to do it long-term.
I don't think we can do it, we can designate someone in charge. And, and they probably couldn't provide that guarantee.
Well.
I, I moved.
Should we let it rest?
Let it rest till the next meeting.
Yeah, I think we need to let it rest.
I'll set it up, so.
So let's go on to, um, accepting the minutes that have been typed up, have you all had a chance to look at them?
Yes.
And does anyone wanna make a motion?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm abstaining from the whole thing, I, I will not get involved in any minutes that I was not on.
I'll make, I'll do it, I've been thinking of it anyway tonight. I'll make a motion, uh, to, uh, let's see, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept. The following set of minutes, uh, do I go through all of them, the May.
You made a motion to accept the minutes identified in the meeting.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the, the set of minutes, four, four point nine A, four point nine B, four, four point nine C, four nine. Point, four, four point nine, point, point, period, point D, four point nine, point E, five point nine, point F, five point nine, point G, five point nine, point H.
Thank you.
Good job.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are you ready? Okay, so we're back into regular session. It is ten thirty-three P M. And, um, I need a motion to adjourn.
No, no, no. Future agenda thing.
Oh, future agenda.
Yes.
I was ready to go.
No, just one quick thing. Based on the, boy, I stuck them in there. Based on the, uh, comments made tonight about the Northwest River Road, the trees, the com, comments that I've made about Landzola. I, I would like to see the heritage tree ordinance put on the next city council meeting October fourth. Please, please, please.
Yes, please. Uh, yes, please.
Yes, please. And, and, and I keep saying this, I, I have been wanting R two. To be farm ranch or orchard in the supplemental use table. If we can only. Possibly section that out maybe and and verify that and make it to where those. And myself have R two and have farm ranch or orchard in R two as a part of the supplemental use table. We need to change that. I, it's injured many people from trying to get an ag exemption or just to even start the process. And so we need to finish the supplemental use table.
I don't think zoning has enough, affects the agricultural exemption.
Well, I mean, but it, it affects the uses that a person can do with their R two zoning on their land. Because if it says that R two is only for manufactured homes, it doesn't say that I can have a farm ranch or orchard in R two.
Is it, is it, is it a farm ranch or orchard?
No, because I haven't been, I haven't been able to do that or even. Consider getting leases on my land for a farm ranch or orchard because it says in the supplemental use table that I can't. So my hands are tied because it's only allowed in R one, which I think is a misprint and that it should have been in R two. I mean, why is farm ranch or orchard only allowed in R one but not in R two? It doesn't make sense.
I agree with you. It doesn't make sense. And in, in most cases. If, if it's unimproved land, it would just be continuing non-performing use. Whether there's cows on it or not, I don't think we.
But it's owned to R two. It doesn't say that I can have cows on, on R, R two. It doesn't say that. And it doesn't, I mean. See, and, and Mike Holmes across from me is owned R two, but because he's got cattle on there. And he's got a gravel pit. Those things have been grandfathered in probably because he was doing those types of activities.
He's probably got an egg exemption with the cow.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, it's, it's like, I, I couldn't even start to get greenhouses on my land or have an orchard legitimately. Because I can't do anything under the table, so to speak, because I'm on the city council. I need farm ranch or orchard in R two.
As, as it relates to agenda setting. We do have that portion rewritten in the drafts that were worked on in the last workshop that are somewhat old. To do a zoning change, we're gonna have to do the public here, the notices, public hearings, signage, signage, the whole, the whole shebang. Because it's a zoning change.
Well, it's not necessarily a zoning change. It's just we're readapting.
Changing use, that's a zoning change, yeah.
So we would have to, we can do it. We, we haven't done it yet because we wanna get the whole ordinance done before we did all that. Dog pony show, but. I mean. That's been sitting on the plate now for a year and a half. Almost two, no, over two years now. What, the supplemental use.
Cause I remember that workshop before I was.
Came on. So it's, it's been over two years since, since that was last touched, so. We could go forward with what that rewrite is. Part of the zoning change process and address it with that. Push whatever else that hadn't got done yet, not include it in the, uh, in the update.
Okay. But, I mean, do you, do you feel confident on how you've written the heritage tree or ordinance that it's almost fully to be accepted by the October fourth meeting?
It would. It would require prioritizing that work above most anything else to get it.
We need to get that done though, because I'm really concerned not only about the trees.
I'm saying, I'm saying it's not, I mean. If the city council wants to do it on October fourth, we can get it done on October fourth. There's other things I'm, what are we pushing there? Like the towing contract.
The, the, the.
Like the towing contract.
Oh, but I mean, it seemed like you had the heritage tree thing almost completely written. I mean.
It's, it's copied in cases from other municipal examples, but it's gonna take some time.
Would, would everybody have a problem kind of putting it at the top of the list? Can we, can we put it on top of the list? Can we do that for Mr. Clickout?
Well, we could, but don't we wanna get this towing contract?
Okay, maybe the next city, maybe the next.
Start jumping off.
Okay, alright.
Because the, um, I mean, I listened to the concerns tonight about Nor, Northwest Road. I'm, I'm concerned about the preliminary plat agreement with Landzola and how. I mean, unless nor, normally things about trees are not written in the, in the plat, preliminary plat agreement, but. There was nothing in there about, as you mentioned, construction around trees to, to help trees with barriers. And don't build within fifteen feet of the tree or or whatever. I saw that, but we don't have it as an ordinance and we need that because we're getting developers that are. Knock, knocking on our doors and some of the oak trees there, and I won't, I'm sorry, I'm dragging this out. But some of the oak trees on that Landzola property are some of the biggest trees we have in the city.
Yep.
And, and if we lose those trees, it, it's, it's gonna affect me a lot. And as will maybe Matthew's life or yourself. I, I'm not sure, but it, it concerns me a lot.
Yeah, we can get that.
Hey, put it up. Can I put him up?
Well, he said he has to make some adjustments and it's, it's.
Put him, put it as a, you can put it to the top. I almost said the top of the line. Okay?
You gotta finish the towing, towing.
Towing, but, but, okay, put, how about that? Is that a deal?
Towing trees.
How about that? Is that a deal?
We're towing in trees and it just wait on the supplemental use thing.
Okay.
Still been around, that's not working.
We got a deal.
Makes it twenty-five, thirty percent longer.
A hundred percent longer. Hundred percent.
That's only when you do. And you. Make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I second.
You had to make a motion.